I have the signal from Howard. Welcome to the reconvening of the public hearing which was begun last Monday night here in the Eileen Dondaro Foley City Council chambers. And tonight, as part of our process, we're going to have a brief presentation by Deputy City Manager Cindy Hayden, and then we'll hear briefly from some board members, chairs in fact, and then we'll commence the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to John and...
Yes, Your Honor. What I've asked...
I'm sorry. I mistake. We need a roll call to prove who is here. So, I'm told by the city clerk. So if you would be so kind.
Mayor Frini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayberg.
Here.
Councilor Dewire.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Hetmanek.
Here.
Councilor Pantalakis.
With that...
Thank You, Your Honor. What I've done is, I've asked that Cindy Hayden, the Deputy City Manager, give about a five-minute, 10-minute presentation regarding some of the things that we heard the other night from the first, from the outset of the public hearing, and tried to identify some of those areas that there are concerns. And the staff discussed this internally. Doesn't mean that what she's presenting tonight is absolute what would go into the ordinance as amendments, but it's something for conversation to get started for the city council when they sit and have a work session regarding it. So, I thought it would be important for at least those that took the time last week to come out and speak to at least have some feedback, because we typically don't do feedback within the public hearing, and we thought we'd like to give some feedback tonight and then go forward with the process and then tomorrow, work with the city council in the work session process. Your Honor?
Thank you, John. And Cindy, again, just let me add that, again, this is not typical that we would, you know, the nature of a public hearing makes it difficult to have dialogue, but we did want to be certain that we recognized that which we had heard in the previous portion of the public hearing. And with that, we'll turn it over to Cindy Hayden, and you can hear about her thoughts.
Thank you very much, Cindy Hayden, Deputy City Manager. And I should point out that I'm speaking tonight on behalf of staff because in my role, I oversee the Planning Department, and not in my role as a voting member of the Planning Board. So, not representing the Planning Board, but city staff tonight. As the city manager and said, we got a lot of good public input at the public hearing last week. We've also had written communications, and those have been very helpful to staff in trying to come up with strategies that might be useful to facilitating the city council's process as we move ahead. What I want to do tonight is two things. Talk about a couple of areas in the zoning ordinance where we believe we have some proposed solutions based on the input received to date, and then also on some other issues in the zoning, just clarify some items. And let me start out by clarifying one item, which is kind of a small item, but an important one, which has to do with flags. And the only flags that are prohibited by the ordinance are flags that behave as signs. For example, if you had an auto dealership that had a row of two dozen flags out front that were huge flags that advertised the auto dealership's name and cars for sale, those are signs. Those are prohibited. The flag on the flagpole, or state and national flag in someone's yard, those are not prohibited. So with that, we'll go to maybe some of the more substantive issues. One of the issues that came up is downtown parking. And the problem that we were trying to address is, we all have cars, we all need someplace to park downtown, and as I believe Counselor Hetmanek said, it's all about who pays and who's going to provide that parking. Right now, the in-loo fee for parking is quite low, $1,300. So developers typically prefer to pay that rather than build the parking themselves on-site. In the proposed zoning, some of the concerns that were raised at the public hearing and in letters to the council were that one space per 500 square feet is too much parking for them to provide, and that we had taken away the ability to pay the in-loo fee for residential, and that they had to provide the parking on-site. And finally, we reduced the, or increased the size of the parking stall from an eight-and-a-half-foot width to nine feet. So, one thing that the council and the public may want to think about, that we've talked about at the staff level, is to change it to one space per 1,000 square feet required for the upper floors, allow the in-loo fee as it has been for residential, but increase that fee to something that gets us more towards being able to assemble public money to build a parking garage eventually, and we're just throwing out there 5,000 per square, uh, per space. And then finally, to go back to what's in the existing zoning, an eight-and-a-half-foot wide parking stall. Islington Street was another issue that came up. In the existing zoning that is Central Business B, this red area here, it's surrounded in the yellow by apartment district. And really, those things, those two zones are not very compatible with one another. In the Central Business B, you can have a 60-foot height, whereas it's 35-foot in the surrounding residential. You can have 95% coverage and 5% open space in the Central Business B, that red area on Islington Street. But in the surrounding neighborhood, you have to have 20% open space and 35% coverage. So those two things were going to lead to us having this canyon of 60-foot-high buildings eventually up against these smaller, lower-density residential areas. So in the proposed zoning, we had talked about rezoning that portion of Islington Street to mixed residential business. What we heard from people was, that was too much of a change, that the minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit was too high, that the coverage of 40%, building coverage of 40% was too low, and minimum open space was too high. So, something for the council's consideration as you move forward in your deliberation is to look at no minimum lot area per dwelling unit, increasing the coverage to 60% building coverage, open space at 15%, side and rear yards of 10 feet, and then a maximum building height of 40 feet, as a way to make the improvements on Islington Street and the redevelopment be more in keeping with the Islington Street scape study that was just completed. The Gateway District, just wanted to provide a little background on this item. This was really driven in large part by the master plan that talked about wanting to have commercial corridors as they redevelop in town, as special as downtown is, to get that mix of uses of residential and non-residential in our commercial corridors, get the parking off to the sides and around back rather than have a sea of parking out front. And just by way of example, this is the Walmart big box, and this is, you know, what you have with a typical large parking lot out front. Really, the only pedestrian way is this sidewalk, not broken up with landscaping, not much going out here on the highway in terms of buffering. And there was really a need to enhance, try and enhance the character of those corridors as they develop. And one we're particularly concerned about, of course, is Yocans. Here's the main road, you know, we don't want to see a big box here, and then a sea of parking out here. Essentially, what's permitted for uses in the Gateway District is the general business district uses. We're trying to reduce the minimum yard and have a maximum front yard, again, getting the buildings out to the street, the parking behind and to the sides. And I think one area where there may be a little bit of confusion is, there is an optional planned development component to the gateway which tries to incentivize better design, allows the mixing of residential and non-residential uses, allows greater building coverage on the lots, and requires a leadership in energy and environmental design for neighborhood development, which is all about pedestrian amenities. So that's kind of what the Gateway District is. What we proposed, or the concerns we heard about the proposed zoning was that the two OR parcels that are located across from McKinley up in here are, people did not want to see those rezoned as part of the gateway, and they felt the proposed setbacks were not enough, that buildings were going to be too close to the road. So some of the solutions the council may want to think about is just leaving those two office research parcels as-is, and let the rest of the corridor be gateway, and increase the setback to ensure that we have a good landscape buffer out front. This is just an example of what a nice planned development can look like. This is down in Kingston, Rhode Island. And as you can see, you know, you've got a nice green buffer along the main road, you've got parking in between and behind buildings, and just a nice mix. And that's what it looks like on the ground in built fashion, not your typical big box with a sea of parking out front, and really quite nice pedestrian amenities within. The continuing care retirement community, this is obviously a major policy decision for the council, but I just wanted to provide a brief overview of what it is, which is another option for senior housing, and it's the full continuum to go from independent living to assisted living to skilled nursing. This would be allowed in the Office Research District with, as long as you could assemble up to five acres. And we have the setbacks listed there. The Planning Board and staff were very cognizant of having larger setbacks from residential neighborhoods with a good vegetated buffer. The Planning Board also wanted with this type of development, a lot of usable open space, so 40% of the upland area was to be open space. And height limitations were also a concern, and the closer you are to a residential district, the lower the height. So if you're less than 150 feet from residential, 40-foot height, more than 150 feet, then you can go to the 50-foot height. This last item, the access requirements, obviously a big concern out there. And I just want to point out, just for clarification, that that requirement is in the subdivision regs. The maximum cul-de-sac is 500 feet. And I'm sure we all recall the Atlantic Heights issue, people concerned about a long road in with only one way in and out. And that's what a cul-de-sac is, a street with only one outlet. The Historic District, really, there are three areas, Islington Street, Lafayette, and Hanover, shown here, one, two, and three. I don't think I need to go through those. Those would be additions to the Historic District, and I think people understood those. Where the confusion might be is along Middle Street, which right now is just, that's this area here, and it's just an even footage back from the street, whereas all the other portions of the Historic District are parcel-based. And what is being proposed is that that street also become parcel-based, so the properties that would come out are these little green areas here. And it's about 50 properties that do not front on the main street, the main gateway in, and they would be removed from the Historic District. Site review regulations, that was another item that came up. The site review regulations are adopted by the Planning Board rather than the council, and those are essentially in their final form and would become effective, effective with the date of the zoning ordinance, just because there's so much interplay between the zoning ordinance and the site review regs. And that's where all the regulations are when the Planning Board reviews site plans, vehicle standards, parking standards, utilities, outdoor lighting, et cetera. I don't need to go through them all. What is important to know in terms of what's before the council right now is that site review regulations apply to two things, non-residential development, and also to multifamily dwellings, and in our case, in this city, of five or more dwelling units. What is proposed is that we review also, at the site review level, three- and four-unit multifamilies. And that is something that the council will ultimately vote on. Just one more issue, which is, why adopt now? What we have heard for feedback, and I think is often the case, when you have both the existing zoning ordinance and the proposed zoning ordinance are currently in effect, people want to know what the rules are. People don't like being up in the air and in limbo for too long, whether you're a developer trying to develop a piece of property, a homeowner trying to sell your home, or you're trying to buy a business. And this is my "don't throw out the baby with the bathwater" slide. We have opportunities that are going to be delayed, parcels that may redevelop, while the Gateway District is not in effect, and that we would not have the benefit of that. As I'm sure you know, we've talked a lot about and incorporated a lot of sustainability regulations in both zoning and site review, and we don't want to see those held off until some future date. Or, if they are, there are some implications for those. We want to see more screening in our parking lots. That won't come into effect until the news ordinance is adopted. And then with Islington Street, that really has grown out of a lot of the public input process that we had for the whole study, and various studies that have gone on over the years. And we really want to make Islington Street more compatible with the surrounding residential districts. And we also want people to have a user-friendly zoning ordinance where anyone can open it and understand what the rules are. And again, there's that issue of the site review. Right now, we don't review multifamily developments unless there's five or more units, and that often causes problems with traffic and parking and drainage and that sort of issue. We had this summer and into September four public hearings at the Planning Board level, and this is just an example of the kind of layout that we did with the Planning Board, of the subject that was of concern, the comment that was received from the public, and then we spoke about every single one of those and came up with a recommendation. Some things we changed, some things we decided to leave as-is. And what staff is able to do on short notice, and we've already started extensively down this road, is to prepare for the council, essentially this chart with much more detail in a third column, which would say, these are the portions of the zoning ordinance that you would need to change if you want to change Islington Street, or if you want to change downtown parking standards from the proposed zoning. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing us up to speed as to thinking of the Planning Department, where we are now, what recommendations might be. For councilors, this starts to frame, no doubt, after we hear this evening's input, what might be in the work session tomorrow night. And so, we have three more brief speakers, and then we'll get right to the public hearing. First will be Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Paige Roberts.
Hello. Good evening. Paige Roberts, 1 Walton Alley in Portsmouth. I guess I just wanted to start by thanking you for the attention that you've already given to the zoning ordinance and that you're continuing to give. I feel like we've gotten a lot of great responses, which Cindy just outlined. And as you know, the staff throughout the city is working hard on trying to respond to that and see where we can make some quick adjustments, things that won't have kind of a enormous domino effect. But we're eager to continue to work with the council and, you know, hear more comments this evening in the future, and try to make this an even better document for when we move forward. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the HDC, Sandy Dyka, to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Sandra Dyka, 333 Marcy Street, and I am Chair of the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission met eight times to entertain modifications to the zoning map. In the end, we came away with the four recommendations that you have before you. I think that we have done our due diligence by getting out in the neighborhoods and talking to people. The area where we have had the most feedback actually is the reconfiguration of Middle Street from 150 feet in width to one lot in width running along the face of the street. Some people really don't want to be taken out of the Historic District, and I think that the reason the modification was made is because currently with the 150-foot setback, what we have are parcels being dissected by the Historic District boundary, and therefore you end up with partial houses, partial lots, partial fences, very confusing to the public, very confusing to the staff that has to moderate it. So, that was why we came up with the one lot in depth. I think the solution is, it's not that there aren't some nice parcels that will go out of the Historic District. I think the solution is that we're going to go back and take a look at some of these neighborhoods. Richards Avenue is a beautiful street, and we've heard from some of the residents that they're not happy at being taken out of the district. Perhaps we can revisit this after the first of the year and give some consideration to perhaps extending on Richards Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work. And finally, before we begin, we'll ask the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Steve Miller, to come forward and say a few words about the commission's input.
Thank you. Steve Miller, 38 Thornton Street, Chair of the Conservation Commission. As I've presented to you before into the public, the changes that we, the Conservation Commission, proposed and worked through many sessions with the Planning Board, were, the changes were all based on our experience through our meetings and the proposals that we were evaluating and giving advice to the Planning Board. They're also, well, we went through our experience, we spent a lot of time researching them, we looked at the science very carefully, and then we had many work sessions with the Planning Board where we compromised quite a bit. Some of the changes, we had asked for a little bit more, and I think just when you look at Portsmouth, our long development history and our, the way we've developed, I think we made some really good compromises that made sense, that were based in reality. So we really worked hard on these. I think, you know, they reflect the master plan and what was asked for by the citizens in the master plan. They help us resolve issues that we are dealing with and will continue to deal with, stormwater issues, which are a huge issue that we're getting our hands around, but these changes will help us. I think, I, it's, I don't want to use time unnecessarily, and I've only heard some comments second-hand about some concerns about the changes that were proposed. So just real quickly, we did propose changes to jurisdictional wetlands, and that was to decrease the size of jurisdictional wetlands down to 10,000 square feet. We had actually hoped for a lot smaller. And when we worked with the Planning Board on that, we looked at maps, we looked at assessments, we really tried to look at and be very sensitive to any economic impacts that they might have, the changes that we were proposing. And we met, I think, and made a very good compromise at 10,000 square feet, based on the science, because the science tells us that all wetlands will give us improvements in terms of stormwater, help us manage our stormwater, help us manage our flooding. So we know that whatever size we don't protect, we potentially increase our problems in terms of flooding, in terms of stormwater. So, we met, we had very good compromise with the Planning Board at 10,000, based on, based on mostly that it would have a minimal impact, the areas that still have wetlands of this size, it would have a very minimal impact to Portsmouth and to further development. So, we were very careful about that, very sensitive to those needs and those concerns of people in Portsmouth. But I think, just to finish up here, the changes that we made or proposed, I think will help Portsmouth in the long run. They're what the master plan asks us to do, they're what the citizens ask us to do, and I think they'll, they'll help us a lot in terms of sustainability, and they'll really help us a lot in terms of quality life. Now, I'd love to answer any particular questions, and I'll stick around.
Thank you, Steve. And at this point, again, I'd ask the councilors to remember that tomorrow night, we'll have our chance. This evening, we need to press on with the public hearing and make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak. I would ask, given that the public hearing is an extension of that which was done last Monday, that those of you who have already spoken, you certainly may speak when we call the second round, and if I don't remember whether you spoke or not, you know, I'm not going to call you out, but I would appreciate it if, out of courtesy, you would allow those who have not yet spoken to go first. When it appears that everyone has spoken in the first round, I will call a second round so that people may then come and speak, and again, a third. Now, I will probably seek a recess sometime between 8:30 and 9:00, depending upon the flow of what we're seeing here and what we see in terms of people who want to speak. I would ask you to queue up fairly promptly. If it appears it's going to be a long presentation, and obviously you don't have to stand there for 20 minutes, but I'd ask you to queue up so that we can move in an orderly fashion. And with that, the public hearing's open, and certainly entertain our first speaker. If you could identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. I'm Mark Stebbins, and I live at 117 Bow Street. And I'm here to talk to you very briefly about the Continuing Care Retirement Center, part of the rezoning. My business partner, Michael Kane, who's also a resident of ProCon, excuse me, of Portsmouth, and I are very proud to live in Portsmouth because of the full range of offerings to a vast array of economic status. And we felt, in looking at, you know, living in Portsmouth and being developers in the community, we felt that a big hole in the offerings were a full range of retirement care living for the middle class. Now, right now, in order to get that, you have to drive to the outskirts of Exeter, and a lot of people we've talked to in Portsmouth do do that, visit their parents or loved ones in Exeter, and leave Portsmouth and spend hours, you know, it's a half hour there and a half hour back, and so forth. One of the things I want to clear up is, these communities are not for the wealthy. And that's been bantered around. These communities are for people who have worked hard all their life and have paid off their mortgage and put out enough away, enough of a nest egg away, to live comfortably for the rest of their life. If this type of community were built for the wealthy, there wouldn't be very many of them, and the market would be very, very small. There is not a market in Portsmouth for a community that just caters to the wealthy. This is very much middle-class and upper-middle-class community. The other thing I want to point out is that I've never, I've been through a lot of these rezonings and a lot of hearings in my life, and I've never been through a more thorough planning process than this. And our proposal came in front of the Planning Board March of 2007. The Planning Board and two planning directors, not just one, but two, planning directors have worked very hard on this process and this part of the zoning. And what we originally proposed to the Planning Board and to the, to the city as a whole is very different from is very different from what is now being proposed. The Planning Board spent a lot of time putting their input into it and making a lot of changes to the, to the original proposal we made. And, you know, the hours that I spent here was nothing compared to the hours that the Planning Board and Planning Staff spent on this. I find it troublesome that anybody would say that this moved too fast or was not out in the open. This thing was so out in the open and moved, frankly, much slower than a typical process because the, there was constant input and constant changes being made by, to the Planning Board, input to the Planning Board and changes being made by the Planning Board. I want to turn over the mic to Malcolm McNeil, who will, who, as a lawyer, will spend a little more time on this than I, but I do want to say that if we're able to provide this type of living to the middle class and the upper-middle-class in Portsmouth, I think it would just be, make Portsmouth even a better place to live and a place that all the residents of Portsmouth can be even more proud of. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Malcolm McNeil. I'm an attorney with an office at 180 Locust Street in Dover. In my comments today, I'm particularly struck by the fact that so many of you have served on the Planning Board that sit up there now, because I think it's so relevant to what I'm going to be saying to you about this project. I represent the owners of the 38 acres of land on Borthwick Avenue that was originally the focus subject matter of this proposal. It has now morphed into a different type of proposal, where in any office research zone in Portsmouth, this type of project may go forward. However, it's clear to say that the focus initially was on the 38 acres on Borthwick Avenue, and the focus has been on that property for five years before the Planning Board. Before us, there was a project known as Islington Woods, which I'll speak to you about, that was also considered for this site. I've been coming to Portsmouth for 20 years as a lawyer and gone through various rezonings. There has never been a site that has been more reviewed than the site at Borthwick Avenue. The site has been reviewed by the Planning Board and two different Planning Directors, and clearly, from the evidence that I will give to you, what is being proposed is consistent with the master plan. It's also very clear that as the proposal has developed, this is not spot zoning. You can ask your own city attorney, you can ask the Planning Director. Under any circumstance, the way this is being proposed and presented, it is not spot zoning in any fashion. There's been comment in the press from some of you that this is some kind of a flawed process because the proposal has been initially submitted by a property owner that has resulted in a zoning change. That happens all the time. Let me give you the best example of it, the Home Depot on the Swalding Turnpike. When Tom Flatley owned that property, and it was used as an office complex, there came a time where Pease was being developed, and I came here on his behalf, he instituted the action, but ultimately, it was rezoned. The entire Liberty Mutual Complex in Dover, consisting of about 5,000 employees, came as a result of an initial thought from a property owner to have an area rezoned. So, it's a very common procedure. The planning viability of the idea is what counts, not who the source was. This proposal does not create problems on Islington Street. It, in fact, avoids problems on Islington Street when you compare the impacts between what we're proposing and what is already permitted. So, in terms of the background, in 2004, Chinburg Builders, a very reputable company from Durham, came here to propose Islington Woods, to rezone this office site that had been zoned that way since 1995 to business, which would have allowed two-thirds of the site for residential use, one-third for business use, and we were targeting artist-live-work spaces and those types of uses. That was not adopted by the Planning Department, and it was not adopted by the Planning Board. Thereafter, in 2005, the master plan was started, and the master plan had three different categories as it related to proposals for zoning. There were some components of the plan that said, "We're going to make no changes at all." There were other components of the master plan that said, "We're going to change various areas." And there was a third component, very small area, where it said, "We will do further study to ascertain whether changes are appropriate." That was exactly pinpointing this property. If the master plan were comfortable with the office zoning, there would have been no reason to do a comprehensive study to determine whether it might change. In February of 2007, Borthwick Forest LLC came forward with the plan that Mark has spoken to you about. We filed a request initially with you to rezone that got referred to the Planning Board. When this got to the Planning Board, from March of 2007 until now, the Planning Board has looked at this project in every possible way, and this rezoning in every possible way. Unlike most of the rezonings that are proposed here, there have been consultants involved that have reviewed the various components of this site. On June 21, 2007, there was an informational meeting after we filed. A traffic report was issued at that time during the process that showed traffic would be markedly less for the CCRC than any office use by about a third, that an office use would operate at peak hours and not off-peak hours where older people would be able to circumvent traffic problems, and that an office complex probably would require a major access point on Islington Street, whereas our project proposes the major access on Borthwick Avenue. Additionally, an environmental consultant determined there would be greater open space in a CCRC than in an office complex, there would be more wildlife habitat, more area for recreation, and almost six acres less of pavement. There was also an analysis as to whether there was a demand for this use, because many members of the Planning Board were saying, "Does Portsmouth really need it? Who will live there?" Whatever. A study was presented on that issue. And then importantly, in my view, a fiscal impact study was prepared by Applied Economic Research in Laconia that said that the tax, the net taxes to the community for the CCRC use as opposed to the office use would be $1,100,000 net rate. In August of 2007, the Planning Department did a comprehensive review of the proposal. Now, two years later, the Planning Department, two Planning Directors, have come forward with what is being proposed to you. It's important to note that throughout this process, the property owner has not been asked to do any further studies, the property owner has created and produced every study that the city asked for, and there has been no questioning, in my view, of the credibility of anything that was being proposed. The, as Mark said to you earlier, what was proposed in 2007 and what is before you tonight is markedly different. Now, there was a totally independent study, we had nothing to do with it, that went before the Economic Development Commission on November 7, 2008. They were doing an independent analysis relative to office demand in Portsmouth and hired Sergeant Consulting to perform the analysis. The summary of the findings were these: There is presently a 19-year supply of land for office space available, based on past absorption rates, and based on 2008 absorption rates, a 25-year supply of capacity. Additionally, the study said, as such, the use of the subject property for the proposed CCRC would have an insignificant impact on the city's potential to accommodate future office construction. In essence, there was no demand. It's also important to note that the most probable market source for demand would be the Portsmouth Regional Hospital and its medical practices. They have supported the CCRC from the outset. Now, the Borthwick Avenue area has been zoned for office use since 1995, and not one office has been built there. A drive around Portsmouth would indicate there is presently a glut of office space on the market, 25,000 square feet available on Borthwick Avenue, 125,000 square feet available on Commerce Center, and 300,000-plus square feet available at Pease. Now, in addition to doing the office, no-office comparison, the Planning Board also asked us to compare our project with the Riverwoods Project in Exeter, which is comparable, and the Piper Shores Project in Scarborough, Maine, to ascertain and compare how they would interact and how they would be of service here. We did that, and on April 30, 2009, there was a comprehensive presentation to the Planning Board that produced sustainable facts as follows: One, no demand for office use; Two, at least a $1.1 to $1.3 million greater fiscal return; A better environmental result; And a reasonable transition between the residential properties on Islington Street and the office institutional uses on Borthwick Avenue. We're talking about houses for people who are 75 years old, in between. Most importantly, there would be less traffic from our use than a permitted office use. This developer or the proposal has never proposed a major access point on Islington Street. But those of you who have sat on the Planning Board know that if one is required, it will have to be placed there, and provisions can be made for it. But if an office use were to go there, there would, there would be a need for access there, and the traffic impacts would be greater, i.e., the permitted use would have a greater impact than is what's being proposed. So, after that April meeting, the process continues and continues and continues until May of 2009, the chairperson of the Planning Board said, "We have work sessioned this to death. Let's have a public hearing." And on July 16, 2009, there was an expansive public hearing, and I'd like to read to you the comments of various Planning Board members, including Deputy City Manager Hayden, who spoke tonight, when they decided to refer this to you rather than kill it. Mr. Blankensop said the following: "He felt that the referral made the most sense," I'm quoting him, "He made a motion to vote to incorporate the draft zoning amendment into the draft revised zoning ordinance and consider it as part of the broader zoning revision package, which would enable further public comment," which was of great concern to the Planning Board that there be continuing public comment. Deputy City Manager Hayden, these are all quotes, reiterated that this is not the last time people can come out to speak on this. If it became part of the overall zoning ordinance review, there will be three additional public hearings whether public will be able to speak. She felt Mr. D. Bernardo asked a fear question about public benefit. He was here at the last meeting. "In the master plan," Ms. Hayden said, "they said they want a diversity of housing in the community. There are a fair number of people in this community that want this type of housing. Their parents in Riverwood are far away, and she believes it meets the community benefit. Something is going to go in that area of the city and giving the value of the property because it is hard to downzone property by right. They could build an office complex." This is important language, though. With this approach, what's being proposed here, "they," the Planning Board, have far more control over site features. Why? An office complex can be built as a matter of right. You meet the criteria, it's approved. This cannot be built as a matter of right. It can only be built under the conditional use permit provisions that I will read to you shortly, which are highly restrictive. Anthony Covielo also said, "Another public benefit is the amount of open space, as shown to you on the presentation, that this development will have, and it will also free up housing in the city. Putting in an office facility will only create a greater housing demand." Mr. John Rice felt good about the addition of the buffer zones that you saw here and height restrictions. The closer you are to residential properties, the lower the buildings and the further back you have to be. Chairman Ritchie stated that he felt this application has far less impervious areas than office buildings, and traffic would be less. Lastly, the open space is better hydraulically, and you get better drainage. And then, importantly again, Mr. Covielo added that, "As written, this is a conditional use which has a higher standard than site review." Now, a previous speaker, Mr. Coker, does not speak for the Planning Board with regard to this zoning change. The people who I just quoted do. Nor has Mr. Coker participated in the drafting process since May 14 of this year, and during that period, many changes were made to be responsive to the public. Now, after the July hearing, there's been three additional hearings with regard to this project, on July 23, August 6, and September 10. Now, for what has been described by many as a huge project, the objections from the public have been absolutely minimal. I have done drugstores that have had more comments than this. Through all of the public hearings and all of the work sessions, approximately two to four speakers have been the only parties to appear to express concerns, and their concerns have been infrastructure on Islington, Islington Street and infrastructure. All of you who have sat on the Planning Board know that infrastructure in Portsmouth and in New Hampshire is not a free ride. If the applicant cannot provide the infrastructure, he will not be approved for site review. And with regards to traffic, the empirical evidence is that the traffic will be less than an office use. Now, Mr. D. Bernardo was a speaker here against the project. Mr. D. Bernardo was at practically every meeting, every work session conducted by the Planning Board. In terms of his due process and other people's due process and the need for further delay, Mr. D. Bernardo spoke on July 16, July 23, August 6, and September 10, and last week. He's had a lot of due process. Another gentleman named Paul Manley, who may or may not speak this evening, has done the same. There have now been four public hearings. There'll be another one possibly tomorrow night. The public process has not been limiting, the public process has not been flawed. Now, there's been some talk, I know, on the part of some of you, of carving this out and moving it someplace else or considering it separately. Well, I'd like to ask you, do you know of any parcel of land or any project or any idea in Portsmouth that now has been considered for over five years? And do you know of any project that has been now considered for two and three-quarters years by an initially skeptical Planning Board who has basically rewritten this ordinance and proposed it to you? Now, the issue then becomes, well, what would you do if you have further hearings? The business zone that was the Chinburg proposal wasn't advanced by the Planning Board. The, this is not in the central business district. Workforce housing was not a part of the consideration of ultimately by the Planning Board, they ruled it out. Industrial uses would not be appropriate. A single-family neighborhood in that area would not be appropriate, a mobile home park, waterfront business, unrestricted apartments, none of that would be appropriate. What is there left to study? In terms of the conditional use, after the applicant, and I'm almost done, after the applicant meets all of the criteria, all of the dimensional requirements, all the height requirements and everything else, where if this was an office project, you would have to approve it, an applicant for a CCRC has to do the following: The board will have to find that the site shall be in appropriate location for the proposed use, taking into consideration location, access, and layout, after, after compliance. The development shall be constructed in a manner that is harmonious with the natural surroundings, minimizing impacts to wetlands, forested lands, and other sensitive features, after you meet the requirements. When, in this project... In this project, when the total area of the development site is greater than thirty acres, a portion of the site shall be set aside for community purposes, which may include a senior center, public recreation facility, or passenger rail service, including land area for building and parking. If our project goes forward, it's over thirty acres, that will be required. And then, last but not least, and as a lawyer, I objected to this, but here it is. Let's presume everything is complied with. Here's the last one. Nothing contained herein shall compel the Planning Board to approve a conditional use permit for a CCRC. While the intent of the section is to provide flexibility both to the board in considering an application and to the applicant in designing a project, not all parcels are suitable for a CCRC. Could there be any greater protection than that? Because I'll tell you, if I were standing in front of you as a Planning Board, and I had brought in an office use, and I complied with the dimensions, and you said no, there'd be a second stop to that process at a higher level. The second stop stops here in terms of your control. So, thank you for your time. I'd like to suggest to you that a skeptic might say this about opposition to this project and retaining the status quo. The skeptic might say, "Why don't we leave it as office? Because there's no demand for office, and nothing will happen in our backyard." So in terms of what we're seeking, we're seeking a place for people a little bit older than me and a little bit older or more older than many of you, where they can live, where you can visit them, in a highly desirable environment, returning to the city between one-point-one and one-point-three million dollars net, in an area that is a reasonable transition from residential to office and institutional use, and a new component to a very proud community that has many things going for it. We ask you to pass it now. Five years plus of review is long enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Just please state your name for the record and address.
My name is Ralph Woodman. I'm a local lawyer, eighty-two Court Street in Portsmouth. I'm here this evening on behalf of Thirty Maplewood Avenue Trust, which, not surprisingly, owns the property at Thirty Maplewood Avenue. It has owned that property and been a taxpayer of the city for more than thirty years. The property is adjacent to the VFW. It is a low-slung brick building, two stories high, contains approximately thirty thousand square feet of commercial space. The sad reality for this property is that, in all likelihood, by the spring of two thousand and ten, it will be nearly empty of commercial tenants. Despite the aggressive marketing that it has done, it is quite simply just too difficult to compete with Pease, who's offering one or two years of free rent to the same commercial tenants that Thirty Maplewood Avenue Trust is attempting to attract. So, when the new proposed zoning was made public, my clients felt they had to look at it and determine what effect it would have on what they could do with their property. In a letter, which all of you received dated November nineteenth of this year, if you looked at converting that property to residential uses, and if you considered that each of the units would be fifteen hundred square feet for each floor, that the proposed zoning would require double the amount of onsite parking than the current zoning requires, and, as a double whammy, would take away the option of the payment in lieu. Now, I am not going to make the same comments that I had intended to make when I came in this door, because I am, quite frankly, impressed and blown away by what Ms. Hayden proposed to you. I think this shows, and I'm hoping that her comments are shared, at least in part, by members of this council, that the city government in Portsmouth does work, and that you are listening to the comments that have been made at the previous public hearing. With that said, however, I would like to offer a few suggestions to the comments that were made and have a few suggestions. I believe that the current parking requirements are sufficient to protect the downtown of the city of Portsmouth. In the proposal that you were shown on the board, it talked about one parking requirement for every thousand square feet, as opposed to one-and-a-half parking for each unit, which, frankly, I think makes more sense, even though it might hurt a developer if the unit is less than a thousand square feet. I'm not sure if the five-thousand-dollar buy-in is the same as what the commercial is. If it isn't, it should be, that the residential and the commercial should be the same. I also would note, and this goes along with asking the question of why are the changes necessary, that when Ms. Hayden had the, on the board, the "why adopt now?" There were seven or eight or nine bullets as to why adopt the zoning ordinance now, and none of them pertained to downtown parking. So that, I don't get around the state as much as Paul McEchran does, but I do get to Concorde, Manchester, Nashua, and other municipalities in the state. And there's just absolutely no question that Portsmouth is considered the jewel of the state and probably of this region. And I'm asking myself, if Portsmouth is thought of like that, and downtown Portsmouth, then why are the changes necessary? And I, although I wasn't in town, I did watch the comments at the last public hearing, and I think it's Eighteen Congress Street, which is, if I understand correctly, couldn't have been, couldn't be developed today if the proposed zoning was in effect, and brings in more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars annually, more than what the taxes were for the previous property. And I think to myself, well, is it, is it Eighteen Congress Street itself that's bad? Is there something wrong with Eighteen Congress Street? Because I don't think that the city doesn't like the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year that it brings in. So, the original proposal, I believe, would have had a stranglehold effect, especially on the development of residential properties in downtown Portsmouth. And I am very impressed with the responsiveness of the staff in their recommendations to you, but I just can't help myself in two closing comments. One is that I would like to recommend for your reading the lead editorial in the Portsmouth Herald today, which, if it has escaped you to date, it just talks about the zoning and what the need is to change it now. And I'm just restricting those comments to downtown parking. And lastly, and at the public session, there was a phrase that I heard mentioned, and I can't remember it. It has something to do about if it's perfect is the enemy of the good. It's something along those lines. And I want to leave you with a phrase that I believe trumps that, if only for the reason that all of you first heard it from your mothers, and that is this: If something is worth doing, it's worth doing right. It seems to me that you have made great strides in this new proposed zoning ordinance, but if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right, and I would just like to have you keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Hi, I'm Tom Heaney. I live at Thirty Hooly Way here in Portsmouth. I just want to let you know, I've had an opportunity to look over a lot of the changes that are coming before you. I found them far-reaching and visionary, and I'd like to compliment the volunteers and staff members for all the work that they put in. But in an attempt to make something better, oftentimes there are unintended consequences, and I believe that the devil ends up being found in the details. And it's just two of those details that I'm here to talk to you about tonight. My attention was called to the environmental protection standards and most particularly to jurisdictional areas. I noticed that there's a proposed change in the wetland ordinance that would reduce the jurisdictional area from its current size, which is half an acre, roughly twenty-two thousand square feet, to ten thousand square feet. And I'm really concerned about that. It's a lessening of less than half of the current accepted size. Mr. Miller spoke before you tonight. He said, you know, it would have a fairly minimal impact in town, and I call that into question. I wonder how minimal that impact will ultimately be. I can tell you that in my twenty-eight years in Portsmouth, I've owned five properties. Three of them would now fall within the jurisdictional setbacks of this proposed ordinance. In fact, maybe four of the five would. So I'm questioning whether that's minimal. I'm not addressing something that would be the Sagamore Watershed. I'm not addressing the Great Bog. I'm talking about things that are literally in our backyards, in already-developed neighborhoods. In my particular case, it's in my front yard. I'm thinking a diminution down to ten thousand square feet is quite questionable, and before you would allow that to happen, I would ask you to see what its effect is. How minimal is it? How many acres of Portsmouth area that are in current developed neighborhoods will now fall under the guidelines being set forth before you? The second part that goes along with that is under the identification, oh, excuse me, is under the permitted uses. And I would just ask for a little bit more clarification on what those permitted uses are. You know, again, this diminution of size down to ten thousand square feet is going to be in neighborhoods. And what I call into question is what it's going to allow the individual owners in those neighborhoods to do on their property. Am I going to need a conditional use permit if I'm going to put in a patio? If I'm going to cut down a tree in my backyard, or, again, in my case, my front yard, do I need a conditional use permit? I think the effect of this is far more reaching than, I think, meets the initial eye. I'm just calling it to your attention and hoping that you will give it the attention that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor Farini, excuse me, City Council members. My name is Jeff Johnson. I represent the ownership group of the Portwalk Project and Hilton Yard Inn. We appreciate the efforts of the Planning Board to improve the zoning code, excuse me, and as a stakeholder in downtown Portsmouth, we'd like to provide some focused and hopefully constructive comments to the ordinance, some of which were already handled by Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Deputy City Manager Hayden. First, I'd like to introduce Alan Davis. Alan is a, works for Tie &amp; Bond. He's a consulting engineer, a parking consulting engineer. He's a registered engineer in several states and has been a parking consultant for almost forty years. He's been advising catharsis on the design and operation of the Portwalk Garage for a few years now, and I've asked him to review the zoning ordinance changes. I hope you'll find them, hopeful, helpful and interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alan Davis, and I have an office in Sunapee, New Hampshire. As Jeff said, he asked me to look at the proposed changes to the off-street parking parts of the zoning ordinance. And what I found was that Portsmouth has this active, easily-walkable city center, and the city's approach to providing necessary parking is one of the main reasons for that success. By encouraging development to occur with shared centrally-located municipal parking provided through fee-in-loue payments, you have saved the street experience. Without that approach, individual small lots would have been developed, as in many downtowns, spreading the storefronts apart and leaving dark gaps between them. As an alternative, if you had required parking to be provided on the same lot, you might have prevented development, especially small expansions of successful business in existing buildings, because they would have had a great difficulty in assembling extra land to accommodate the parking needs of their small expansions. Having reviewed the new text, I would suggest that four of the new sections are tending away from your successful model. In Section Ten, One-One-One-Five-Twenty, which refers to the number of required off-street parking spaces, the proposed change in the method of parking requirements in downtown is a wonderful idea. It's going to greatly assist in the administration of the ordinance by making it much easier to deal with changes in the use of existing buildings, by just eliminating the need to calculate changes in the parking requirements. It's a great idea. The new text reduces the requirement for office uses in downtown compared with suburban locations, from four spaces per thousand square feet to two spaces per thousand square feet, and that's appropriate for upper-floor downtown office locations. But the proposed average level of requirement, one space for five hundred square feet, will serve to discourage residential development. It requires more parking spaces per dwelling unit in downtown than in suburban locations. Downtown dwelling units larger than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet or age-restricted units larger than six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet would be penalized by this new language. Residential developments in downtowns typically show reduced peak parking demand compared with suburbs. And residential demand peaks at night, not during the day, when other parking demands peak. So, some relief from these proposed requirements should be considered for housing on upper floors in downtown, I think. And my recommendation would be that you keep the proposed average requirement for parking in downtown, except for housing uses, and set an additional standard of one-point-two-five spaces per dwelling unit for all housing units in downtown. The current and the proposed standard for multifamily housing in suburban locations is one-and-a-half spaces per unit. Setting a slightly lower standard for downtown would reflect surveys of usage in other downtowns, where residents typically walk more and have fewer cars. And the change I recommend would retain the simple way of administering the zoning regulation, because you'd have one standard for everything except residential and one standard for residential. Upper-floor conversions from commercial to residential would not require the addition of parking, which would be a deterrent, unless the proposed dwelling units were very, very small, fewer than six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet. So it would be a simple change in the zoning regulation, but it would reflect well on the attractiveness and would not penalize the attractiveness of residential development. There's one other related proposal, and that's the proposal to eliminate the parking requirements for all ground-floor uses in downtown, except restaurants. And the proposal is that the requirement for restaurants in ground-floor locations is ten spaces per thousand square feet, which is the same standard as for a restaurant out in the suburbs. And if you continue to have this provision in the new language, you're going to make it very, very difficult to get new restaurants in downtown, because they are going to face a very large economic penalty compared with existing restaurants. It'll make them almost impossible to be competitive. The proposed language doesn't really recognize that the peak parking demand for restaurants really occurs in the evenings, when there's plenty of office parking available to satisfy that demand. Restaurants do have another peak in midday. It's a smaller peak, but in midday, most of the people who of the people who frequent restaurants are already office workers in downtown or other workers in downtown who are already parked there. So adding parking for restaurants in downtown is not appropriate either in the evening or in midday. So my recommendation would be that you do not require restaurants to provide additional parking on the ground floors in downtown. Now you have a really simple downtown parking requirement, which is no requirement on the ground floors, a level requirement on the upper floors except for housing, and a fixed amount for housing on the upper floors, which would accommodate conversions from office uses to residential uses without changes unless those units were tiny. In the section which relates to the fee-in-lue, providing city-owned and operated parking through this fee-in-lue mechanism means that fewer spaces are needed to serve the mix of uses in downtown. That is, fewer than if you required each use to provide its own parking at its required rate. And that's because you can share the parking on a time-of-day basis, and I believe you understand that. Restaurants generate high parking in the evening, office parking is available to satisfy that demand. Similarly, some residential parking, which is used heavily in the late evening, is available during the middle of the day to service shoppers and diners during the middle of the day. You accept a reduced price per required space as fee-in-lue for two reasons, as I understand it, or you can accept a reduced price for two reasons. First, the city needs to build fewer spaces than the number of fees it receives. Second, the city receives the revenue from the repeated use of shared parking facilities to offset the cost of operation and the cost of construction. So you build fewer spaces than you get the money for because you don't need all the spaces, and you get revenue to help pay off the costs. The proposed section continues this policy, except for residential parking. By making residential parking, residential uses provide their own parking, you do three bad things, I think. First of all, you discourage residential development because you make it more expensive and less affordable. Second, you reduce the pool of fees which you receive to build municipal parking. And three, it reduces the revenues you will get from your municipal parking because you don't have the spaces, because you haven't built them. So I would strongly recommend that you eliminate the change which takes the residential out of the fee-in-lue process and put it back in so that residential can help you build your municipal parking facilities. And last, and this may seem like a strange one, the proposed increase in the width of parking stalls from eight foot six to nine feet seems of minor importance. However, when an existing use anywhere in the city is changed or expanded after you make this change, its entire existing parking facility must be modified to comply with the new regulation. So that minor change, six-inch change in the size of the parking stall, would impede the investment in improving existing properties. And I'm not sure that that's the way you want to go. The proposed language, going from eight foot six to nine feet with a 62-foot-wide parking bay, that's 19 feet plus 19 feet plus 24 feet, 62-foot wide bay, is typically used for high-turnover shopper parking, and in this language, it's applied to all uses in the city, office uses, residential uses. The purpose of requiring parking under zoning is to protect the health, welfare and safety of the community by ensuring that the streets are not blocked by cars. So with that focus, zoning requirements should aim at ensuring that the spaces and the circulation in off-street parking are adequate for the purpose of getting cars off the street. And requiring a higher level of service should be the choice of the property owner. Saks should be offering more generous parking standards than Target, but it shouldn't be a function of the city to require the higher standard. By requiring the higher standard, you impede economic development by increasing the costs for all owners, as well as increasing lot coverage and runoff. The city's requirements of 62-foot bays and eight-foot-six wide spaces really reflect standards for shopping center parking in the early 1970s when the typical car was a 20-foot-long Chevy. In my experience in other cities, 56-foot-long parking bays with eight-foot-six wide stalls have worked very well for over 20 years. There's many examples of garages and parking lots which are built to those standards, 56 feet with eight-foot-six stalls. If you're familiar with the Post Office Square Garage in Boston, which everybody seems to like, it is built to 56-foot bays and eight-foot-six stalls. If you continue to have a 62-foot standard bay, future city garages are going to have 10% more cost, 10% more footprint, and 10% more coverage than if you had smaller bays at 56-foot. And then if you increase the stall width by 5%, you increase the cost of construction of future city garages by another 5%. So on this subject, I would recommend that you keep your present standards, that you do not increase the stall size from eight-foot-six to nine. But I would also recommend that you initiate a study to establish separate standards for parking in lots and in garages, with a view to introducing an amendment to your newly adopted regulations as soon as possible. But before you build your next municipal garage, and I think that you need to look at the standards for garages in relation to the location of the building on the lot, setbacks, the stall layout, and pedestrian circulation. Because if you read those sections in the current language for parking stalls, you will find that some of those, the phrases in those sections are not applicable to parking in parking structures. I thank you for your attention. May I leave you with copies of what I have just said?
Please do. Submit it to the city clerk and we'll put it in the record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Alec McCacron. I live at 81 Cottage Street in Portsmouth. I'm here tonight in my capacity as an attorney representing my client, Catharus Private Investments Parade Office, LLC. I'd like to start by submitting three requested changes to the proposed revised zoning ordinance which implement the recommendations of the parking consultant, Alan Davis, that you've just heard.
Take those, the city clerk will take those to the record. Thank you.
I won't read through the requested changes because they're self-evident, but in addition to those changes, I'm also requesting the inclusion in the proposed revised zoning ordinance of the intermodal transportation credit, which has been omitted. As evident from a reading of the intermodal transportation credit section of the current ordinance, all of the underlying goals of the intermodal credit remain. And I'm reading from the ordinance, which speaks as follows. "These efforts are intended to reduce congestion, to increase the supply of available public and private parking spaces, and to promote the activities that assist in the attainment of federal air quality standards for this region. It is intended that all property owners should participate in these endeavors. Such improvements shall include, but are not necessarily limited to, the following: to provide adequate, safe off-street parking facilities for use within the central business districts by its residents, patrons and visitors; to provide convenient, safe off-street parking facilities and/or structures which are located in proximity to the central business districts; to encourage the design of such structures in ways that recognize their location, the, excuse me, the area's distinctive urban character, and which recognizes the objectives of the Article 10 Historic District Ordinance." The intermodal parking credit was, is a provision in the current ordinance which allows a property owner who constructs a parking facility on their property to receive a credit multiplier for the parking spaces provided. For example, a property owner who builds an underground parking garage would receive a three-to-one credit multiplier, so that for each underground parking space, they would receive two additional credits, as if they were providing three spaces. By granting a credit multiplier to property owners who agree to construct covered parking structures, the current ordinance encourages good development practices by creating an incentive for property owners to contribute towards solving the city's unmet parking need in a manner that also protects the city's historic character. By removing the intermodal transportation credit from the revised zoning ordinance, the city is taking the private sector out of the parking solution in a way that will decrease the chances that private property owners will build covered parking structures as part of their developments. This will lead to more surface parking and an increased reliance on the city to build municipal parking facilities. In the short term, this approach will result in an increase in unmet parking needs until more municipal facilities are built. And in the long term, it will tend to lead to the construction of more surface parking lots, as property owners look to meet essential parking needs onsite at the lowest possible cost. By choosing to keep the intermodal credit, the city will continue to encourage responsible development in a manner that is in keeping with the city's historic character. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd take this opportunity to remind everyone, as we proceed, we'll probably take a break around 8:30. I would also ask that people who speak, we're still in the first round, if you've already spoken at the previous iteration of this public hearing, I would appreciate it if you would allow people to rise who have yet to speak. And I'll ask that question now. How many people think it is likely they will speak in the first round that are not yet in line, so that I have a sense? Okay. Okay. All righty, please proceed.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. My name is Stephen Kellm. I currently live at 310 Goodwin Road in Elliott, Maine. I've lived in the seacoast for the past 13 years, with the majority of my time having lived in downtown Portsmouth. I work in Portsmouth. My family is in town on almost a daily basis, taking advantage of a variety of shops, businesses and restaurants located in downtown. I've been working and operating a real estate company for the past 11 years, which has involved in several significant projects and smaller projects in downtown Portsmouth, a combination of residential, office and retail. I undertake projects understanding that I have a significant responsibility to the city of Portsmouth to construct buildings which do not detract from the rich history of the city, nor detract from the architecture which has been protected and preserved, and of which makes Portsmouth an extremely desirable place to both live and work. We dedicate a considerable amount of time and effort to design buildings which blend into the city's streetscape without detracting from the existing architecture. The existing zoning ordinance, which has been in place for the past 15 years, has allowed Portsmouth to grow significantly and responsibly under the guidance of the city of Portsmouth Planning Department and with significant input from the Historic District Commission. Despite the Great Recession and the worst real estate market in a generation, the city of Portsmouth defies the current economic reality with new projects being proposed, designed and/or currently under construction, such as the Portwalk Project, 68 State Street, and the office retail project on Bow Street. The city of Portsmouth has to be the envy of every municipality in the country as city and state governments struggle to pay bills and balance budgets. The new zoning ordinance, as presented, will have a significant negative impact on the future growth of Portsmouth and will significantly alter the property tax structure moving forward. The two critical components of the new zoning ordinance, which impact downtown Portsmouth as it follows and have been the significant discussions which we've been hearing tonight, which is essentially the parking and the 500-square-foot parking requirement per gross-floor area for residential, and also the language within the zoning that requires, or does not allow, the residential use to pay a parking impact fee, but allows all the other uses moving forward to pay that parking impact fee. And another issue which has not been talked about in great detail is the change of the Islington Street corridor from CBB, which it is currently, to MRB, which is the new proposed zoning for the Islington Street corridor, which I believe is just the buildings that abut Islington Street. The change in parking requirements from the current zoning of 1.5 parking spaces per residential unit to one parking space per 500 square feet of residential gross-floor area will immediately impact the ability and desirability to undertake projects in downtown Portsmouth. The gentleman that spoke before, Alec McCacron, had mentioned conversions and the ability to do conversions in the city of Portsmouth, which is taking older buildings and essentially gutting them and renovating them. I'd like to talk about two projects, smaller projects, which I just finished in the past couple of years. One is a building, 117 Bow Street, which was the location of the, there's a restaurant there, I can't think of it, I wasn't in town at that point, the Warehouse Restaurant. And I purchased it several years back and I converted the property to office and residential And this building is located directly to the left of the Seacoast Repertory Theater. This project involved the renovation of existing structure into two office and two residential condominiums. Under the existing zoning, a total of three parking spaces would be required for the residential component. The project supplied a total of four parking spaces for the residential units, two apiece. Under the new zoning, a total of 17 parking spaces would be required for the residential use for two residential units, that's eight and a half parking spaces per unit. Currently, there are a total of three residents who live in these particular condominiums. Two of the residents are part-time, they're there maybe once or twice a month, and they're there for two weeks in the summertime. The other resident is a single gentleman who's there full-time, but he travels significantly. There's a total of three people that live in that project, two of them part-time. They need three parking spaces, four parking spaces were supplied, and the existing zoning or the new zoning would require 17. That's pretty clear that there's an issue there, and hopefully, based on the discussions that I've heard, that that will be remedied. Second project that I'd like to discuss, 58 State Street, not a conversion, a new building that was constructed and was finished in August of 2008. There are two residential units and two retail condominiums. The residential units, there's a total of three individuals living in the two units, one couple and one single individual. Under the existing zoning, you would need three parking spaces. I supplied five parking spaces, the new zone would require 12 parking spaces. As I'd mentioned prior from a prior speaker, on smaller lots where you would do conversions to existing buildings, there's the inability to supply a 24-foot-wide travel lane and two 19-foot parking spaces on either side. So unless you have a significant parcel of property, it's virtually impossible to meet any of the parking requirements with either the new zoning or the old zoning. You need to be creative. I don't agree with the nine-foot-wide parking space, I think it should be eight feet or eight and a half feet. Certainly, the 24-foot travel lane is not necessary, and that sort of is a parking requirement that you would see at a parking garage or more of an urban environment. And over the past 15 years, that's what the zoning has more or less forced you to do. The new zoning, much more restrictive, and it's much more restrictive based on the 500 square-foot requirement. As noted in the above projects, recently completed residential projects downtown have provided more than adequate parking onsite to meet residential parking demands on the projects. The failure to provide onsite parking for residential condominiums makes units unsellable. Therefore, adequate parking must be provided onsite with a minimum of one parking space, and a second parking space would be expected for units for 2,000 square feet or more. 70% of condominium buyers in Portsmouth for the past 10 years are single individuals. Once you get up to units that are 1,500 to 2,000 to 2,500, then you'll have a second per- person typically that's part of that condominium. In one case, I've sold a condominium that was to a family. And looking at 150 condominiums over the past ten years, there was one family with a single person other than the couple that lived there, which we consider a family. But seventy percent of condominiums are purchased by single individuals, be it a one, two, or three-bedroom condominium. The change in zoning along the Islington Street corridor from CBB to MRB will have a similar impact on the proposed parking change in downtown. The MRB zoning along Islington Street will not allow any meaningful redevelopment of the properties along Islington Street, as was proposed under the Islington Street Master Plan. The MRB zoning creates hurdles which will make it difficult at best to allow Islington Street corridor to realize the revitalization of the building stock which has been underway downtown for the past ten-plus years. The most critical impact to the city of Portsmouth of the proposed zoning changes downtown is the impact on the city's tax structure. The new parking requirement will significantly drive down the values of developable parcels, particularly the northern tier and along Islington Street. At the other side of the market, on the residential end, the values of existing residential properties will appreciate. If downtown residential development is restricted, and you can't build any development of consequence, the values of those residential units are going to increase, and they will increase significantly with time. So on one end of the spectrum where you have developable parcels, be it Islington Street or Raines Avenue or other developable parcels downtown, the values of those parcels with the new zoning and the new parking requirements will be driven down potentially 50%. Residential condominiums, on the other hand, are going to be going in the opposite direction, which is going to create a problem of, you know, the property taxes and the values of those units. So you're going to have two issues, one of lowering property values, one of higher property values. In the middle of all this, the parking requirements is making it difficult at best to do residential development. I've done a lot of the residential development over the past ten years, and residential development underwrites and allows the retail, allows the office, allows other uses of residential or office or buildings or properties in Portsmouth. Any effort to restrict the residential use of properties just has a dramatic effect on the ability to do anything of consequence downtown. I don't think it's the city, or the planning, or the city council to implement something that will drastically change what Portsmouth has enjoyed over the past ten or fifteen years. And I think there's minor changes, and based on listening to Cindy Hayden, and I've spoken with Rick Tanner, it seems like the city is receptive, and the planning department is receptive, to making changes that are logical, that aren't dramatic, that will allow Portsmouth to move forward in a positive way and keep the city as a vibrant place. One comment I do want to make, you know, there's an effort to sort of limit residential with the understanding that it's going to overtake office space downtown. If the market doesn't want office space, office space isn't going to get built. And if you heavily restrict the ability to do residential, you're not going to build residential because you can't do it, you're not going to build office because it's not demanded, you know, which in the end is going to stop the city in its tracks, which I don't believe anyone wants to see happen. You know, I'm hopeful that, you know, through the city council and the planning department, that these issues will get resolved, and, you know, I'd like to see the city move forward and enjoy it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. My name's Hank Brant, I live at 37 Houliway. I too am here to express my concerns this evening about the changes in the definition to jurisdictional wetlands within the city, the change from half an acre down to 10,000 square feet. I think, as the previous speaker had said, I think you're going to find that this is far more reaching than was initially anticipated. I know my own personal lot, every -- I have better-than-an-acre of land here in town, every square foot of it will be wiped out by this change in the ordinance. Lands that had previously been used now will be restricted to such uses as forestry, tree farming, wildlife refuges, and the like. If you don't think this applies to you, take a look in your own backyard, or maybe your neighbor's backyard, and see what's there. A hundred-foot buffer is substantial, and we're only talking about 10,000 square feet. That's a hundred-by-a-hundred piece. You draw a hundred-foot buffer around the outside of that, and you're going to create buffer zones that are substantially larger than the wetlands that they're actually designed to protect. In fact, actually, area and buffers, while popular in municipal planning, really haven't found their way into use at the state level. There are only three instances in which the state applies buffers in wetlands. The first is in tidal areas, the second has to do with the separation of septic systems from wetlands and poorly drained soils, and the third has to do with what they call prime wetlands. And that's really the part that I'd like to draw your attention to this evening. Not all wetlands are created equal. It's not uncommon to have sizable wetlands that serve very little purpose or barely functioning, yet they have smaller wetlands that are of great value. And while it's convenient to use a measurement like size as a yardstick when determining how to treat a wetland, if you really want to be forward-looking with this, I ask that you set that aside and take a look at the quality of the wetlands that you're trying to protect. A hundred-foot buffer may be fine for some, it may actually be insufficient for others. It may not be necessary at all for yet others. So rather than sitting there and taking a look at the wetlands that you have, based on the size they are, take a look at the actual quality of what you have out there and what you're trying to protect, to meet the objectives that your purposes lays out. And I think you might find that you're actually going to come up with a far better ordinance. I'd also like to point out that last year, HB 1579 was enacted, and it created what is generally referred to as a Land Use Commission. This was basically a composition of some of the best soil scientists and engineers put together to take a look and study land development regulations and the effects of land development within upland areas that may affect wetlands and surface waters of the state. Well, I've talked to a couple of the folks on the board there, and as they tried to look at wetlands and how they should approach trying to protect the wetlands and so forth, the very first thing they did was they abandoned the notion that size has anything to do with quality of wetlands or wetland protection, and that was immediately put off the table. So what I would ask you to do here is to perhaps leave your current ordinance in place, take a look at, you know, talk to your folks there, and have them take a look at retargeting this. And rather than talking about size, let's look at the quality of the wetlands we have, and see if we can protect them in the right way, so that we can achieve the objectives that your ordinance lays out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll hear from our next speaker.
Good evening, Jeff Mountjoy, 62 -- excuse me, 62 Orchard Street in Portsmouth. I wish to commend the planning board for its tremendous efforts in bringing to the table the revised zoning ordinance. It goes without saying that many hours have been spent compiling what is a very important and a crucial document to the future of Portsmouth. A city which we know is currently recognized by many as one of the greatest small cities in this country, to live, to work, and also to play. With that said, however, there are several key areas in the proposed ordinance that I firmly believe still require greater public input and amendment before they are accepted. As several speakers before me have noted, the first area I believe that needs attention is the rezoning of Upper Islington Street. I am opposed to this change based on the fact that firstly, the area has a history of density far greater than what is proposed under the new ordinance. Secondly, I believe if the change in density is put into place, it's my understanding that all the properties within that area will currently become, automatically become non-conforming. And thirdly, as you read through the city's master plan, it calls for greater density, not less density, throughout the city as we struggle with the issues of affordable housing. It's my recommendation for the council that Islington Street area remain CBB, but that a height restriction of 40 feet be applied to any new development. This, along with an oversight of the HDC, I believe will help ensure appropriate growth along the corridor. The second area of concern relates to the issue, as previous speakers have mentioned, to downtown parking requirement for residential condominiums. The master plan, again, refers often to ensuring that the vitality of our downtown area is not only protected, but also promoted in the future. The vitality of downtown Portsmouth, that fantastic blend of retail, office, and residential condominiums, is one of the reasons why our city is such a great place. As Attorney Woodman and Stephen Kell mentioned earlier, it's a model for zoning and development that other towns across the state and across the country envy. I strongly believe that the proposed change to require one parking space per 500 square feet of living is unreasonable, and will have detrimental effects upon our city, both in the short term and for any future growth that we may wish to see. My recommendation to the council is that I believe the park requirement should be one onsite parking space for each residential condominium, regardless of size, and there there not be an option to buy out of this space without a variance. For condos that are over 2,000 square feet, I believe there should be a requirement for a second parking space be provided, but that the developer should have the option to buy out of this second place at an amount deemed appropriate by the city. I would ask that the council give serious consideration to amending these two issues before the ordinance is voted upon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Now hear from our next speaker. Step right up.
My name is Chris Keenan. I'm a local attorney with an office at 125 Brewery Lane here in Portsmouth. I'm here to represent one of my clients, Mr. King Weinstein. Mr. Weinstein, as many of you know, owned, among other things, the old Schultz Hot Dog Factory property, which was before that the Frank Jones Brewery. I took a look at the new Historic District Commission extensions, and it struck me at the portion of the Historic District Commission on Islington Street that's being extended struck me as very odd. And when I took a look at it, and then went out on Islington Street to take a look at the buildings, I thought, why is this being extended the way it is? It's only a couple of blocks. The extended district actually runs from Dover Street on the northerly side of Islington to Bartlett Street, and on the southerly side of Islington, it runs from Union to Jewel Court. The problem that I see in walking up and down that corridor, that particular section of Islington Street, is there are very few historic buildings in that corridor, in those few blocks. You have gas stations, bicycle shops, you have commercial businesses in old residences that have been rebuilt long, long, long ago. The only historic buildings are the old Frank Jones Brewery buildings, and they are certainly historic, having been built sometime in the late 1800s. Those are the buildings that are owned by my client, and there's actually four buildings on the brewery property. Two of the four have already been restored and by a prior owner, it was actually Don Schultz, and he did a very nice job with those two buildings. The other two buildings are the last, comprise the last standing section of the actual brewery building, and that is the section that is behind the CVS Pharmacy, which is certainly not an historic structure by any stretch of the imagination. And behind the pharmacy, you have a third floor that was added by a previous owner of red brick that is certainly not historic. The building itself hasn't been used, behind CVS has not been used in the 25 years I've lived in Portsmouth, and I suspect it goes back 40 years or more, that since that building has had any use behind CVS. The second building is at the corner of Albany Street and Brewery Lane. It's the old grain storage building. It has approximately seven-foot ceilings, and no one in 25 years has been able to find a use for it, including myself. I looked at it 23 years ago and couldn't figure out what I could do with it. It's hard to find uses for old industrial buildings with seven-foot ceilings. The reason, you either have to take out every other floor to create 14-foot ceilings and create a lot of wasted space inside the building, or you have to align the floors so that they have the proper space between floors. However, that takes them out of line with the windows that are already in place. When you're in the Historic District Commission, that becomes a serious problem in trying to redevelop that particular building. Mr. Weinstein and before him, the Schultz family, have been trying to find a use for redevelopment of these two old buildings for at least 25 years, the 25 years I've been in town. They've had absolutely no luck, despite monumental efforts by the developers and by a lot of real estate agents, to find a use to redevelop those buildings, too. To put these two buildings and this lot in the Historic District may mean no redevelopment of all, at all, of those buildings. They may just continue to sit empty for a long time. We haven't been able to find, or the owners haven't been able to find redevelopment possibilities without the Historic District overlay, and the Historic District overlay on this particular lot can be disastrous to redevelopment. As I said earlier, the, if you look at that section of Islington Street, you've got gas stations, popper wheelies, converted homes to commercial buildings, a convenience store, Sullivan Tire, an old bank that's now an oral surgeon's office, a dentist's office with commercial and retail uses. That's what you have there, and all, most of those buildings, if not all of them, are relatively new buildings. I mean, they may be 40 or 50 years old, but they don't have this historical significance of the brewery buildings. When I took a look at what was going on, and I have to pause and say that this has been a yeoman's effort by your planning department, by your legal department, by the office or the manager, I mean, when this city does things, you know, they really put 100% effort into it. I've worked with all of those particular departments in this town, in this city, and I've always found them to be incredibly easy to work with. We may not always agree, but they're good to work with, and they're good people. However, with this particular extension of the Historic District Commission, it looks to me to be some sort of an attempt to create a spot zone for the old brewery property. That will impede the development of that property, it will not enhance it, and the properties in between Jewel Court and Cass Street, there's not a lot of historic significance in there. It's looked to me, it seems to me, that if you were going to extend it, why wouldn't you extend it farther and take in the old button factory buildings? You know, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, doesn't make sense to my client, and I would ask this council to take a close look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would remind everyone that we're really looking to hear from first-time speakers this time out. Those who have spoken at the previous public hearing, I would ask you to consider that, that there are a number of first-time speakers here that we must hear from. Welcome.
Your Honor, members of the city council.
And if there are, excuse me, Harold, I hate to do that to you. If other people are going to speak in the first round, depending, we're going to go till about 8:30 or a little after, so I'd like you to please rise, if you could, so we know what we're looking at. Thanks.
Your Honor, members of the city council.
Yeah.
I'm Harold Whitehouse of 58 Humphreys Court. And I hope I'm a breath of fresh air, because I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a businessman, I do not own property, and in the areas that are being offered zoning changes, I will not be speaking on the parking issue, the Islington Street and Bothwick Park Retirement Community or the Route 1 corridor. But I would like to talk about something that's very dear to my heart. In fact, I want to talk In fact, I want to talk about the Central Business District, and I've been referred to over the years as probably the most noisiest non-businessman in the Central Business District, because I feel it's so, it's very important. And I hesitate to speak, because I was hoping somebody else would carry on on the way I think about the Central Business District and what we're losing. And I'm going to bring up an issue that is not part of the master plan, but it should be, and please, when my three minutes is up and I ask the city attorney, please raise the card and say thank you, because I don't want to be long-winded.
Harold, I don't want to say this, but you have more than three minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, as you are well aware.
Now, I've attended a lot of the work sessions and a lot of public hearings in the Planning Board. I attended the work sessions with the City Council, and I've sat back and listened to the last public hearing, and I've took a lot of notes from the various people, but nobody's going to mention, nobody has mentioned this issue that I'm going to talk about, and that is, we're losing, we're losing what the people come here for. The old scenario, build it and they will come. In a few years, the old scenario will be build it and they won't come, because we're losing a lot of history. And I'm going to refer to the waterfront and the streets off the waterfront, and I'm going to refer to the streetscapes, and I think that's missing in the master plan, and it should be a separate ordinance. Now, let's draw a map of Market Street, Daniel Street, Bow Street, Chapel Street, Penn Hollow Street, and Chief Street, and draw a circle in that area. Now, that area hasn't changed in streetscapes in quite a few years. Now, I'm not saying we don't do nothing down there, I'm not saying we don't replace the sidewalks, or put in period lighting, or make it more presentable, but we don't change it so it does not attract the tourists. The tourists like the narrow sidewalks, they like the alleys, they like the little quaint little shops, they like the little narrow streets. And all I'm saying to you is, when we replace a sidewalk, just replace in kind. If there's concrete there, replace it with concrete. If there's asphalt, replace it with asphalt. It's too bad somebody can't perfect a substance that looks like coal ash, because I remember the days when they used to wheel coal ash out on the driveway and into the sidewalks, and it'd still be steaming, but before the end of the day and before the end of the month, it'd be packed in like, like concrete, and it had a porous substance that the water would drain down through, and it was good traction under the feet. So, you know, that's an idea for some entwerter that could like to produce a substance that looks like coal ash. Anyway, what I'm about to say is, I think that we should at least have the master plan pertaining to the streetscapes of the old section off the waterfront, which I just identified, and I think if we don't, we're going to lose the only part of downtown Portsmouth that attracts the tourists, and that's historical. We can, we can, we can keep the sidewalks the same width, we can put different period lighting in. Why can't we put a period lighting in that, I go, I remember back in the '30s and '40s, where there's a large shade with a, with a, with a white porcelain underneath and a large bulb. That type of lighting is really considered old for this city. Now, I, they, the tourists love the quaintness of this city, as I said before, the alleyways, the little narrow streets, and if we lose it, as I said, it will be lost forever, and my great-grandchildren are going to say to me, 20 years from now, they're going to say, "Grandpa, what happened?" Did anybody get that, 20 years from now? "Grandpa, what happened? Why didn't they listen to you? I, I look at old pictures, and it's no longer there, the old part of the city. Where'd it go?" And I'm going to say, "Well, I tried, but they just didn't listen." So, I think, with the speakers that I've watched and listened to, I think this, passing this ordinance on December 21st is not that crucial. I think the two councillors that are coming on board are up to speed on this, they're very knowledgeable of the change in the master plan and the ordinances that are being proposed, and I say to you, we have a work session whereby the questions that have been asked over these last few weeks and few months on this issue, you sit down and have one-on-one discussion, and allow them five minutes with another five-minute extension, and be able to answer these questions, whereas a public hearing, you can't answer the questions they're asking. And I have eight or 10 pages filled with questions that certain individuals were asking, and all I'm saying to you, either tomorrow or carry it on to the first of the year, have a work session whereby the public can sit and ask these questions and get answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and this will be our, maybe, our last speaker before a recess.
Mayor Farini, members of the council, members of the senior city staff. I'm Peter Lachlan, and I hope I don't ruin or take away Whitey's breath of fresh air, because I am both a lawyer and I am going to talk about Islington Street. And I also want to talk about the Historic District and the wetlands buffer. Regarding Islington Street, I'm representing Dale and Sharon Smith, who have operated Old Portrasers at 275 Islington Street for the last 16 years, and Dale was associated with Atherton's Furniture Store at that same location since 1972. The city's goals concerning Islington Street are quite clear. For those 23 properties involved, the city, the staff has proposed creating a transition zone, reducing the height, and I've heard people talk about the canyon effect, a concern about that, and to require residential parking. The original proposal, it was in the June 11th draft of the ordinance, was a drastic, one might say a draconian change in the impact on the area. It would reduce from the number of permitted units under the present ordinance from perhaps over 40 down to three for residential units. I think it required unrealistic parking requirements and would have eliminated the, any real incentive for private redevelopment. We contacted the planning department, had some meetings with them, I think they understood our concerns, were very good to work with. A week ago, I didn't speak, but I submitted a letter to the council outlining in some detail concerns that we had, and listed a number of specific suggestions. And over the last week, I've worked with the council, excuse me, with the staff, and they have, the changes that Cindy Hayden announced tonight, I think are quite appropriate, including this would reduce the height from 60 to 40, a feat of 33% reduction. It would, I thought the parking requirement was going to be 1.5 units, 1.5 parking spaces per unit, and tonight's hearing is one per thousand, but I don't know whether that's meant to apply in this zone or not. There are also certain dimensional requirements. I'm going to submit to you a chart at the break, it won't take up any time, that shows our understanding of what the zoning change would be and how it would affect this property. And with those changes, we urge the support of this and the passage of the ordinance. And the reason we're asking that the ordinance be passed this year is that right now, and since the spring, the, all the properties in this zone have been under a cloud, in that, for example, the Smith's property is for sale, and, but nobody's going to buy it or buy any property in that area, knowing that, well, maybe the zoning's going to change, and maybe it'll be something we can live with, and maybe it will be something we can't live with. And that uncertainty, and if that goes on for another year, that's, that's a problem for any landowner in that area. So, in short, I'm urging passage of that particular, passage of the ordinance. I want to talk about two other topics briefly. First, the Historic District Ordinance, and there was a lot of praise for the Historic District Ordinance at the last meeting, and I think it was well-deserved. The Historic District Ordinance has created, in part, the framework that has led to the renaissance of Portsmouth, have been a major part of it, and it's sometimes a difficult challenge for those attempting to navigate its requirements, but I don't know of a single large-scale project in the, since the Historic District has been in existence, that hasn't been improved by the Historic District Ordinance. And I, the, if you want to look at the example of bad planning before the Historic District Ordinance came in, and one would hope it would have had a different result, was the old Parade Mall versus the proposed Parade Mall that's on the books, that's coming in The existence of the Historic District alone has not been responsible for the transformation of Portsmouth. Just having the ordinance isn't enough. Portsmouth has been blessed by three decades of, I will say, exceptional Historic District Commissions, and that's not the case in every community that has an Historic District. Recently, I saw a meeting of the Historic District and was struck by the helpful suggestions that were made in this room by members of the commission, almost none of whom I had ever seen before, but all of whom were incredibly knowledgeable and were making cost-effective suggestions that were practical and helpful for the landowners that were before them. We've also been fortunate in Portsmouth to have a building administration and fire safety officers who live, work with existing historic buildings. Again, that's not something that is, necessarily happens in every community. But one of the, the most important components of the revitalization of Portsmouth has been the individuals who have been willing to invest themselves and their own funds in the renovation of Portsmouth. The big changes downtown didn't happen by themselves. They happened because of people like Richard Martin, Joe Sartell, Bob Thorson, Steve Kelm, the Ritchie family, investors in the old Daniel Street Station, the people that do on the Portwalk, and a number of others, who provided the bricks and mortar for the transformation. My point in mentioning that is, I think it's critical that the city continue to strike that balance between the, the very difficult and important balance between the needs of the public and the needs of those who actually do the building of the private improvements in downtown. Finally, on the city's wetlands ordinance, and what I say is, only going to make enemies for me, and all of my conservation friends will think I've sold out. I got involved, interested in this quite by accident, when a neighbor wanted to, or the son of a neighbor wanted to put an addition on their home. This, in fact, was Adi Baranski, who used to stand at this podium for years and years. And as it turned out, a lot of the information that I got about the, what they were proposing and what the restrictions were, was not correct, and Rick Tainter corrected that today. But there are three suggestions that I would like to make concerning the ordinance, and I mentioned the Baranski property, because that is what started me looking at the ordinance a little bit more. I would recommend against adopting the 10,000-square-foot change in jurisdiction. And some others, earlier speaker mentioned something about that, and I've, you know, I'm submitting a letter to you, and it has a drawing, and it shows a 11,309-square-foot wetlands as a circle, and that's 120 feet across, and that, if that were received protection under the new ordinance, it would require a buffer of 69,103 square feet for total impact of 80,410 square feet. And we're not talking here about necessarily impacts on developers, but on the average homeowner, or many average homeowners. If you happen to have a home on Harding Road, which backs up some open areas, on Pevely Hill Road, on Elwin Road, on Greenland Road, on Islington Street, South Street, Middle Road, and it happens to be a 10,000-square-foot wet area, and it isn't necessarily some, a pond, it may be a wet meadow that is back of your yard that you mow in the dry weather. But if that exists, and it's within 100 feet of your home, now, your home is subject to the, to the wetlands ordinance, and to do anything in the, well, I shouldn't say anything, but to do many things on your property, property you may have lived in for the last 20 years, you need to, you have to go to the Conservation Commission and beg to be able to improve your property, put an addition on it. And, and the Conservation Commission, very well, very dedicated people, but their focus is protecting wetlands. It's not protecting our families, it's not protecting our private property rights, it's protecting wetlands, and I think we need to strike a balance in that regard. The second thing that I'd like to speak of is the conservation, is the provision in the ordinance that will give the Planning Board the authority to extend a wetlands buffer. Maybe that's appropriate, but right now, the way that the ordinance is written, it says it can be done only, it says it can be done if the Planning Board decides it can be done. So, if you want to do something on your property, you've got to hire a wetland scientist and show a number of factors to be able to do something in that buffer. Whereas the way the ordinance is written, the Planning Board can just say, "Oh, we think we want to have another 150." Now, hopefully, they wouldn't do that, they'd do, I'm sure they would do it with a, some, a good deal of thought, but I think the ordinance should spell out what the criteria are to expand the wetlands buffer. And finally, there's a provision in, in the new ordinance that says that you can put in a 25% addition to your home if you are within the wetlands buffer, so long as the extension is no closer to the wetlands and the existing structure. And this was the problem with the Baranski home, which may or may not have been misinterpreted by, by some of the people looking at it, and I don't represent, I shouldn't either of these things, I have no client, I'm representing only myself. But again, I think that I would, I would like to recommend that on existing homes, under the provision which allows an individual landowner, on a one- or two-family home, to put in, to expand his or her home by one-third, or 25%, that that be permitted in all lots with only a showing that you are not going to be closer than 20 feet to the wetlands. So that if you are, your home is 70 feet from the wetlands, you have wetlands across your entire rear yard, and you want to put in that one-time 25% addition, which will put you closer to the wetlands, that you be allowed to do that. Effectively, I'm saying, establish a 20-foot buffer for that one-time 25% expansion of a single-family or two-family home. After, at your break, I'll pass out a letter and a shot for your, in backing up some of this stuff, but thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Peter. And if you want to submit your letter now, you can. We'll hear, Duncan has been standing there patiently, so we'll take him as our last speaker before we call or assess.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Duncan McCallum. I both live and work at 536 State Street. I have a considerable advantage over the last speaker, my friend and colleague, Peter Lachlan, because unlike him, I am not representing any client. I am speaking solely on my own behalf and as a citizen, and as far as I can recall, I am the only lawyer who's spoken here so far that is speaking on his own behalf rather than representing a client. The advantage is that unlike the others, I do not have a dog in any fight. My only interest in this case is what's, is what's best for Portsmouth and in making it a better place than it is, if possible, and trying to retain the antiquity that my friend, former city councillor Harold Whitehouse referred to. I will attempt to be brief. It has been a long night so far, and a sometimes long-winded one, and I do have some points that I want to make of my own, but I will try to avoid repeating what, what the other speakers have said, except perhaps to highlight a few points that I think maybe were not made quite forcefully enough. So, just by way of summary, without repeating everything I said, let me just say that I agree, chapter and verse, with just about everything the following speakers who spoke last week and in part this evening said. I agree 100% with the remarks made by Sandra Deica, by Donald Coker, by Mr. DiBernardo, whose first name I should know, but I don't, John Grossman, Mark Allenson, Elizabeth Stalcup, Sean Rafferty, Kathleen Hershey, Tom Morgan, Zalita Morgan, and I also agree with, in addition to Harold Whitehouse, I also agree with most, but not everything, that my good friend and backyard neighbor, Senator Martha Fuller-Clark, said. friend and backyard neighbor, Senator Martha Fuller-Clark, said. I especially agree with the following. I agree that the historic district commission should be expanded in keeping with the recommendation of Ms., where'd she go? With Ms. Daika. Frankly, I don't think it would bother me if the historic district were expanded to include the entire city. But in any event, I agree with the recommendations that have been made by Ms. Daika and the historic district commission. I also agree with Martha Clark, who says that the 44 properties that for some reason have been removed from the proposed expansion of the historic district should be restored. I also agree with the remarks that Mr. Coker, who says that he is adamantly opposed to the proposal for the continuing care retirement project. He is adamantly opposed to it, and I am adamantly opposed to it too, although certainly he can articulate the reasons much better than I can, and there's no reason for me to attempt to try. And I think he is to be commended in the highest terms for continuing the fight on behalf of the residents to oppose that project. I think it is absolutely outrageous that he recused himself from sitting on the planning board and entertaining that project. And of course, I'm not blaming him, I'm not blaming him, he was just doing what he thought was right. And I also agree with the aspirational goal which my good friend and colleague, city attorney Bob Sullivan, has said. I think the phrase that he was quoted, having used was "pure than Caesar's wife." Is that, is that the way it went down? But I think that, again, I do think it is outrageous that Mr. Coker should have had to recuse himself from the planning board on this project in the first place. And call me cynical if you will, but being the cynical soul that I am and knowing how developers operate, such as I do, I cannot help but believe that Michael Cane and the Cane Company made that contribution to the Piscataqua Maritime Association deliberately in order to generate a conflict of interest where none existed. So far as I'm aware, the Cane Company and its personnel are not known for their interest in tall ships or the Piscataqua Maritime Commission, and one of the reasons that I'm firmly convinced that that was a deliberate tactic was that it was done once to me when I was sitting on the Board of Adjustment. I didn't like it when it was done to me, and I don't like it that it was, that it has been done to Mr. Coker. And I applaud him for carrying on the fight, and I hope, I know he will continue to do so, continue to carry on the fight against this project, doing what he thinks is right on behalf of the residents of Portsmouth. I also agree with the proposed zoning change which calls for a change in parking. I think that they are a good thing. I spoke a moment, I listed a moment ago, the speakers whom I agree with 100%. One of the speakers last week whom I disagree with pretty much 100% is George Carlisle, who said that in his view, the proliferation of condos in the downtown area are a good thing. Well, in my view, the proliferation of residential condominiums are a very bad thing. They were and are a bad trend. They cause increase in parking problems, increase in traffic problems, overcrowding. They cause increases in vandalism. I bought my house in Portsmouth 17 years ago. Back at that time, we didn't have parking problems, we didn't have traffic problems, we didn't have problems with overcrowding. Back in those days, the Portsmouth Police Department did not find it necessary to implement a so-called barment policy, where if you get tossed out of one bar for causing trouble, you're automatically banned from all the rest of the bars in the city for a year pursuant to a compact among the bar owners. We did not have those problems back then. I think it, I think it is a bad trap. Mr. Carlisle and others use the term vibrant, they say that the, it's the economic vitality of the city that's at stake. You know, I sometimes think that when people like Mr. Carlisle and other developers and other business owners who are trying to get concessions for the city council, I sometimes think that they think that whenever they use the magic buzzword vibrant, that means they're automatically entitled to get whatever it is they want from the city council or from the land use boards. I don't think the plan, the idea is so terrific, and I don't think it's so vibrant, partly for the reasons that I've mentioned. If increased bar fights and increased need for police to break up fights outside bars, we've always had them, but not to the extent that we do today. And if that is Mr. Carlisle, what Mr. Carlisle means by vibrant, then all I can say is, he and I have a vastly different view of that term. As part of the justification that was used by him and also by others, I think it was Mr. Clem who used it tonight, they always talk about increasing the tax base or increasing the tax revenues that are going to flow in the city as a result of the development. But as the so-called vibrant, mixed-use residential business and commercial and residential projects have gone up, so have my property taxes, and so have the property taxes of all of the residents of the city. When I bought, my property taxes these days have more than tripled what they were at the time that I bought my house in Portsmouth 17 years ago. Now, my income has not tripled, my quality of life has not tripled, on the contrary, that has gone down somewhat as a result of the problems that I have just mentioned. If these projects are such a good idea and if they're bringing in all of this tax revenue, why are our property taxes always going up? Why are our property taxes not going down? Or why are they not at least remaining flat? Funny thing that has been mentioned twice so far, once by Mr. Carlisle, and I think it was also Mr. Clem who claimed that it is the residential, residential units which subsidize the office, the office units and the commercial units. Well, it's a funny thing, whenever lawyers and developers who are trying to build office condos and commercial properties come before this council and come before the land use boards, they say the same thing except in reverse. They claim it's the office and commercial buildings that are subsidizing the residential buildings. Well, I would have to say that, I would have to say that in my experience, I think, I think probably it is the residential units that are subsidizing the commercial ones because my taxes, my taxes and all the residential taxes keep increasing as these projects go up. It is a totally phony argument in the first instance, that these projects bring in tax revenues and broaden the tax base, because everybody who makes that argument, and I don't know why city bodies keep adopting them, because it is a ludicrous argument, the part they keep omitting is that as these projects go up and as they increase the track, the revenues, they also increase the cost to the city. Whenever these projects go up, be it residential or commercial, there has to be an increase in the number of policemen, there has to be an increase in the number of firemen and rescue squads, there's an increase in the consumption of city services, such as water and sewer. You have to buy more stoplights and more stop signs. The length that which you wait at stoplights is longer, which of course impairs the quality of life. There is an increased burden on the school budget, especially in the case of the residential condominium units that Mr. Carlisle and others have praised. After you have so many students, additional students matriculate into the school system, you have to hire and pay an additional teacher, and you have to hire and pay additional support staff. That increase the cost to the city. It increases the city budget, increases the burden on the taxpayers. And I don't know what the number is, but I do know that for every so many additional students that matriculate into the school system, you have to hire and, hire and pay an additional teacher and have to hire and pay additional support staff. That, I would think, is a simple truism. Moving on, I oppose the, I am opposed to the so-called gateway district, and in particular, I am opposed to the part that will affect the residents of the Elwin Park area. I think it's wrong that that has been brought before this council and before the planning board again, because that was thought to have been settled two years ago, when Peter Eggleston wanted to build, the owner of the Portsmouth Brewery, wanted to build a new brewery. Like my friend Mark Allenson, I well remember the words of our absent councillor Laura Padalecos, who said, "How many times do these people have to come back here? What part of the word 'no' didn't you understand the first two times?" No means no. They said no. This was supposed to have been settled. What did they have to do to convince you that it is both unwanted and inappropriate in that area? Did they have to write it on the wall? Must Mr. Alice Allenson go out and collect another 392 signatures to convince you that he was serious the first time, that he wasn't kidding? They should not have to do that. And now, people, people, developers and others who, such as Mr. Eggleston, have marshaled the support of the Portsmouth Herald, and they all say that these people are so-called nimby's, N-I-M-B-Y, not in my backyard. Well, I live at the edge of the downtown area. I'm not going to be affected by this at all. I am not a nimby. It's not going to be put in my backyard, but I don't think it should be in anybody's backyard. The public should be listened to, the residents who are going to be most adversely affected by the projects such as these, the ones who are going to be on the front lines, they should be listened to and they should be deferred to. I am a navy, not in anybody's backyard. And I think it's outrageous that once again, the people in the Elwin Park area have to come back here and defend their own neighborhoods again, after they have already said no at least three times, taking into consideration the appearance they made before the planning board. They shouldn't have to come back here time and time again. Now, a more fundamental problem, I think, is that there are just too many times when projects such as this are put together, zoning changes are considered, out of the eye of the public and presented as done deals, and then they are tried, and then they are rammed right through for some perceived necessity. When I say perceived necessity, I don't perceive the necessity. I don't see why there is this need for this haste. It is a little bit unusual when I find myself in agreement with the Portsmouth, with the Portsmouth Herald editorial board, but even the Portsmouth Herald thinks that the process should be slowed down and should take, take your time. These are sweeping changes, particularly the continuing care retirement project. That is, as its prime supporter, or at least its spokesman, Attorney Malcolm McNeil, said, "It's one of the biggest projects that's ever been, ever been brought before this city." There is no need for haste. I agree fully with my friend Martha Fuller-Clark, who says that there ought to be study circles, either through Portsmouth Listens or otherwise. I agree with Harold Whitehouse, who says that by brushing things through, we are detracting from the character of the city. I think that this is a, the, I don't know why it was that some members of the city council have been quoted as having said, "We need this passed, this thing before the end of the year." I don't see it that way. Something as monumental, monumental as this is one in which you should take your time and study it carefully. Think before acting, instead of the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to have a recess at the moment, but not for the rest of this evening, so we're going to come back. We'll take five minutes or just a bit longer, and then welcome you all back, and we'll continue with our public hearing. Thank you. Thank you.[191.62]
Welcome back to the, and thank you for bearing with us during our recess. And as we get ready to continue with the public hearing in this case, before we begin, once again, I would just ask, just to show hands as to who's left in the first round? Who's still standing or sitting? Okay, we have a few. If any of you spoke, I think, I don't want to be difficult, but if one of you spoke at the last public hearing, you want to make sure you sit and wait for the second round, but maybe you didn't. At this point, I can't remember. So with that, first round speakers, please come forward and let's keep it going.
Richard Rash, 1507 Islington Street.
Excuse me, sir. Can we, sorry, I didn't get your name.
Richard Rash, 1507 Islington Street, the corner of Islington Street and WBBX Lane. My property directly abuts the property being considered for its own continual care. One of the meetings I did mention that the 47 years I've lived here, there's probably all the proposals I've seen for that property, and there's been many, it's probably the best. However, I'm against this project for one reason, for the traffic and the possibility of an access on Islington Street. It's listed as a Borthwick Avenue project, but it's originally an Islington Street project. By the developers' only plans, they show their buildings to be within 150 feet of the homes on Islington Street, which is a long distance from Borthwick Avenue. And if there's any access on Islington Street, it's only going to be about 200 feet from Islington Street to these buildings. Construction vehicles when it's built, support vehicles, the workers when it's built, 400 to 500 residents, they're not going to check in and just stay there. The elderly people, they are mobile, they are going to leave. Until this issue is addressed, I would say that you do not pass this part of it. This parcel of Islington Street, it looks pretty much the way it did 50 years ago when I came here. We still have no city sewage, no sidewalks, no stormwater drainage. Still, a lot of these issues are met. I urge you to go slow and think this out carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for our next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Richard Pimpus. I live at 43 Wilson Road in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm calling, I'm speaking tonight on the rezoning of Lafayette Road. I first attended this type of meeting when Market Basket Plaza was proposed. My daughter's four years old then. She is currently a sophomore in college. So you can understand, we've been back a few times. I really want to express displeasure trying to, displeasure trying to rezone Lafayette Road for other than what we currently enjoy. The buildings would not be consistent with what is already there, and I don't think that the businesses that would be allowed are consistent with what is already there as well. As a resident of Elwin Park, I am subjected to light pollution from Market Basket. I get asphalt smells from Pike Industry and hear consistent backup alarms from aggregate industries. Don't need more of that. One thing that's interesting is that State of New Hampshire, I believe, wants to make four lanes, pardon me, from Portsmouth to Hampton. And the way it's consisted is that the buildings will be so close to the road, if you add another lane, the buildings will even be closer to Lafayette Road. So that needs to be considered. When Market Basket was finally brought upon us, Mayor Foley said, "Let's fix this so these people don't have to go through this again." But here we are. We are the largest residential neighborhood in Portsmouth, but we seem to have to keep coming back here. One thing I would like to recommend for the proposed changes tonight is removing the two parcels across McKinley and also maybe changing that to include all land from Beverly Hill to West Road. That way, you essentially would protect all the land in front of Elwin Park. So that way, buildings couldn't get torn down and changed or merged with others. Instead of just the parcels, if you add between the two roads, I think that might solve the problem as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hear from our next speaker, please.
Mayor Farini, members of council, Nation Reed, 12 Coolidge Drive in Elwin Park. I was here last time, but I did not speak. I'm here to talk on the Gateway District and in particular, from Beverly Hill Road down to West. Now, you know, we've got Market Basket, the strip mall, and then Public Service. Now, from Public Service down to West Road, there are seven lots. Five of them are occupied. And the average setback, that's, you know, the credit union and, you know, all the way up. The average setback of those lots is 140 feet from the edge of the highway. And it's a good setback. Office Research put that planning in 16 years ago. It's an excellent buffer, and it has been. Now, on the planned unit development that we went through two years ago, they wanted a 50-foot setback and all kind of, you know, shrubbery and all that. That was defeated. I see here on the new, this draft, special yard requirements on Lafayette Road. And they want 66 feet from the center line of Lafayette Road, okay? And I slipped that out to about 38 feet from the edge, you know, of Route 1, which is, you know, that's less than the 50 feet that was, you know, defeated. The other thing with, you know, again, with the setbacks, well, they've got, they've added, you know, a lot of things. Before, the PUD was beverage manufacturing, food processing, and light industry. But now, we've got, you know, car dealerships, you know, and some things I thought were kind of, you know, kind of strange, an outdoor performance facility. And specifically, to quote a memorandum from, this was from Mr. Holden to Mr. Bohanko back in April of 2007. And one of the things that they were, you know, absolutely opposed to encourages the mix, this was the PUD, encourages the mixing of compatible uses and prohibits certain uses, such as outdoor entertainment. And yet, you know, that was then prohibited, but now, oh, that's, you know, they're going to do that. The other thing, I know they want parking in the rear, you know, and all that. I've never seen a car dealership, you know, with parking in the rear. I don't know how that works. The, and the setbacks, you know, I'm a little confused when you go into the uses, like, you know, it'll say food processing. Out in the margin, it says 10.592. Well, you go into that, that's additional conditions. Excuse me, additional distance between specific non-residential uses and lots in residential or mixed residential district. Now, I grant, I assume that is from the lot across the street, you know, from Route 1, from the front of the residential lot back. And what it's saying, you go here, performance facility, outdoor, 500 feet. Now, and I say, what takes precedent? I mean, is that 500 feet? That's the way I read it, not the 66 feet from, you know, from the center line. But that would put that facility back, you know, 400 feet. Those lots are about 500 feet deep because then you have West Road that, you know, runs around the back and the Lafayette West Industrial Park, which is pretty extensive. The other thing, well, they've got, for the car dealership sales, rental leasing, you know, the whole thing, 500 feet, same thing applies. You couldn't get it in there. If, I don't know if that's the way I'm reading it, if that's correct. Food processing, again, 500 feet. But I, you know, I don't know, you know, where you get an answer to that. But regardless of whether it's 500 or 66, I think that Office Research, you know, has worked well. And I applaud the city manager for saying, "Okay, take those two lots out of the seven, there's only two that are not developed, and leave those Office Research." However, you've got, you know, from Beverly Hill Road all the way down to West Road. And if you just change the zoning, you know, or leave the zoning for two, what happens if Public Service decides that, ah, they're going to sell and move on? And what happens, same thing to credit union. There are any of those buildings, they tear them down. I mean, probably not, you know, tomorrow, probably not in my lifetime, but it could happen. And you talk about unintended consequences. And even for that corridor, you know, as you come along, they want a, you know, a nice corridor that's consistent, you know, with Portsmouth. You go through Hampton, Seabrook Hampton, you come up to Portsmouth, the nicest part of the corridor, I think, is along there. They've got trees and, you know, and again, the setbacks, not everything is, you know, is right there on the road. So, you know, I just ask you to try to keep it, you know, and I'm, again, I'm not opposed to development, but not, not that kind of development for Elwin Park.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Carla Goodnight from CJ Architects, and I have been practicing architecture in New Hampshire around the Portsmouth area since 1989. And I'm here to speak primarily about the proposed conversion of Islington Street from CBB to MRB. And the second thing that I would like to speak about is the parking, but I've decided to actually just refer to Mr. Kelms' points on that and just say, I agree that that is a matter that's best left to the work session. But other than those two items, I do believe that the rezoning would be a positive move for the city. But I do ask you to rethink the Islington Street piece. And the reason that I'm looking to that is there is a great deal of opportunity for positive development and aesthetic improvement on Islington Street. And I believe the restrictions imposed by the change to MRB will make development and improvement of Islington Street much less desirable and much less affordable to many people interested in that. And I know someone spoke earlier about expediting the process because this indecision is difficult for property owners in that area. But by the same token, if a decision like this is made in haste, they will have a resolution, but maybe not the resolution they're looking for as their property will be significantly less valuable. The two things that bother me specifically, or three things actually, about the MRB change is the eight-unit cap on residential units, again, making the affordability of the development less viable. And also, the exclusion of restaurants as a permitted use. I can't imagine no restaurants being ever being developed on Islington Street, as well as the reduced dimensional requirements. I feel that the MRB designation identifies Islington Street much more with Middle Street than it would potentially, I feel, maybe more appropriate to look into CBA and identify that area or that zone with the northern tier and the corridor and that sort of revitalization of an area that is less vibrant, to use George Carlisle's word. And not as, being viewed as the transition to residential. I don't really see Islington as a transitional street. I also recognize the need for substantial infrastructure improvements in that area. And in that regard, I'd like you to take into account that the kinds of projects that would be possible in the MRB would be less likely to produce the revenue or the ability of those people coming in to do that work, to meet the requirements of the high standards for site development and improvement of infrastructure, as it should be. We should have very high standards, but we should have projects that can sustain them. So, in closing, I am asking you to consider Islington Street as a viable extension of downtown rather than a transition zone as I believe we currently view Middle Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to hear from our next speaker?
Kind of referred to the, your handouts. Good evening. Mayor Farini, members of the city council. My name is Paul Mantle, 1490 Islington Street, Portsmouth. I've been a Portsmouth resident for nearly 20 years. For the same amount of time, I've also been a business operations and systems analyst specializing in financial systems and software. In my profession, I write, analyze, and implement requirements, specifications, project plans, using available hard information, always reminding my clients, "The devil is in the details." I rise tonight to speak in opposition to the revised zoning ordinance before the city council, Section 10, Spot 7.3, commonly called the CCRC, which changes the Office Research zoning to allow a CCRC to be built under a conditional use permit. While the concept of a CCRC may be viable, this zoning change is not and is solely for the benefit of one developer for the purposes of building over 300 upscale, age-restricted condominiums on a 37-acre parcel between Borthwick Avenue and Islington Street. As a resident of Portsmouth, reasons for my opposition are several. Number one, spot zoning. This is an extreme example of spot zoning, defined as rezoning a single parcel of a small area to the benefit of one or more property owners rather than carry out the objective of a comprehensive plan. Questions you need to ask, does this zoning change benefit one property owner? Yes, it does. Is this in deference to carrying out objective of the master plan? Yes, it is. Did the developer assist in writing the zoning change to fit around the proposed development? Yes, he did. Is the zoning change applicant-driven? Yes. In other words, if there was no application from the developer, would this zoning change even be contemplated in the revised zoning ordinance? The answer is obviously no. And while the planning board have made adjustments to the original draft to deflect the spot zoning criticism, it's been solely, done solely for that purpose, to deflect criticism, with a wink and a nod. Examples of why it is spot zoning. Frontage. General Residence A has a minimum lot size requirement of 7,500 square feet with a minimum continuous street frontage of 100 feet. Single Residence A has a minimum lot size of one acre with a minimum continuous street frontage of 150 feet. The OR district has a minimum lot size of three acres with a minimum continuous street frontage of 300 feet. The CCRC has a minimum lot size of five acres with no minimum continuous street frontage. Why? Because the developer has no continuous street frontage. The parcel is landlocked. Access. In lieu of continuous street frontage, the CCRC zoning allows for a 50-foot right-of-way access. Why? Because this is the only access this parcel has. The zoning change is being wrapped and shaped by the developer's project. Number three, developer specifically requested it. And I quote, "The proposal is for a district that only consists of this parcel, so it doesn't move to other OR zones." Whether a zoning change should be specific to the site or apply to other sections to the community, they are proposing it applies to this site because there was concern that it would jump around the community. All the information I have, I'm giving you tonight, is directly in the public record. It's from the planning board meetings, planning board public record. Number two, the process has been violated. The CCRC was a new proposal submitted by the developer at the 4:30, 2009, planning board work session. No public hearing was ever heard on this new proposal, nor were any of the butters notified. The CCRC zoning change was immediately incorporated to a draft zoning ordinance. And number three, the 716, 2009, planning board public hearing on the CCRC draft zoning change. First, we have Mr. Coker's recusal because the developer's family made a donation to a nonprofit associated with Mr. Coker. Next, the planning department presents the CCR zoning change, stresses that it's not site-specific, that it can apply to several parcels without, within the city, and it's not spot zoning. In the following PowerPoint presentation, it's all about Borthwick Village. The only way for the recusal of Mr. Coker to be valid and with merit is for the CCRC zoning ordinance to be site-specific, regardless of the planning board's presentation and comments. If the CCRC zoning change was, in fact, citywide and non-site-specific, the recusal of Mr. Coker was invalid and without merit. You can't have it both ways. It's an either-or situation. In any event, the process was violated and the public was denied Mr. Coker's experience and his vote. This is, this was critical because the vote taken that night added the CCRC to the revised zoning ordinance. Number three, it sets a dangerous precedent for the city of Portsmouth. I can just imagine the flood of lawsuits from developers who don't get their way, rezoning, variances, et cetera, from the city's land use boards citing Borthwick Village and saying, "City did it for them." Number four, it is not the function of the city of Portsmouth, city council, or planning board to change zoning for a developer to maximize profit or asset value, and especially not to this extreme, from $25 million to $130 million. This is the value of the zoning change according to the developer. Number five, it offers little, if any, benefit to the city of Portsmouth or its residents. How many current eligible residents can afford a $225,000 to $325,000 studio condo with a monthly service fee starting at $1,800, let alone a one-bedroom starting at $330,000 or a two-bedroom starting at $450,000 with fees starting at $4,500? How many current eligible Portsmouth residents would make that trade for their single-family And number six, violation of the master plan, specifically land use 7.6 on pages 26, 27 of the master plan, which calls for the city of Portsmouth, not the developer, to carry out a comprehensive study of this parcel to determine the appropriate long-range policy and zoning for this area. I cannot reiterate or agree more strongly with Don Coker's remarks in this regard made before the city council last Monday. Not only has this comprehensive study by the city not been done, it has been suggested that studies submitted by the developer are sufficient. Do you think the developer has the best interest of Portsmouth and its residents as a priority or his own? And has a developer ever submitted a study or research analysis that didn't support his project? Reasons for the comprehensive study. A is obvious, follow the master plan. B is just as important, misinformation. I was very encouraged to read in the Portsmouth Herald last August, comments by the city council in regard to misinformation at public hearings or public comment sessions that are clearly wrong and the need to correct information to be brought forward. It is my sincere hope that the city council holds the same sentiment in regards to its members, the planning board, the developer, and the CCRC. I was a member of the Portsmouth Listen Study Group for the middle school, and this process reminds me of that, but to a much greater extent, in regards to the misinformation that was given to the study groups. Besides following the master plan, the amount of misinformation represents the most important reason for the city to carry out the comprehensive study, to find out what is reality and what is part of this incredibly slick dog and pony show. Number one, this has been a two- to three-year process. While this is true for the revised zoning ordinance as a whole, it's definitely not true for the CCRC. The CCRC proposal was first presented to the planning board by the developer April 30, 2009. In the words of their attorney, "The plan presented this evening was a different plan." The CCRC has been part of the revised zoning ordinance for less than six months. Number two, lack of opposition. There have been several comments made regarding the lack of opposition in regards to the CCRC. I have heard or read comments that there is only one person opposed to it, only two or three people have complained or observing the lack of turnout from neighbors. It is not accurate. Perhaps the perceived lack of turnout is the result of the process, absence of a butters' notices, or trepidation in opposing the developer, or the belief that the city has already decided. I can't say. What I can say that there is strong opposition to this, and there always has been, last Monday's public hearing demonstrated that quite clearly. In my research at the planning department, I found a petition with 66 signatures on it from December 2008 opposing the CCRC and a zoning change. I will submit another ongoing petition with over 100 signatures tonight. Number three, affordability demographics. In your handout, a recent article in Money Magazine, "Living It Up in Retirement," about CCRCs stated that they generally want to see one to two times the entrance fee in assets and one to two times the initial monthly payment in income. Karen Adams, Gerontological Services, submitted the commissioned market study by the developer to the planning board as part of the 621, 2007 presentation. In nearly every presentation to the planning board since then, this study is cited, including the 1023, '09 informational letter, number two, to the planning department. There have been numerous citations that, quote, "There are 1,303 Portsmouth seniors, 70 years of age or older, that fall into the target market demographic of potential Borthwick Village residents," end quote. This is based upon all Portsmouth residents age 70-plus with incomes of $35,000 or greater. Yet Mrs. Adams, in her remarks to the planning board in June of 2007, clearly states, "The primary market for Borthwick Village is incomes of over $100,000, and the secondary market is incomes between $50,000 and $100,000." There have been numerous citations that the number of Portsmouth seniors age 70-plus with incomes over $100,000 is 313, based upon this same report. Yet Mrs. Adams' study clearly shows, on page 10 of that report, the number of Portsmouth seniors age 70-plus with incomes over $100,000 is 177, not 313. Number four, the assessment of Office Research. Russ Tebow of Applied Economics Research, in the 621, '07, planning board presentations, stated that he based the revenues on actual assessments and what the city assessed on Borthwick Avenue office buildings. His fiscal impact study cites only three properties on Borthwick Avenue as comparables to come up with his office space assessment of $24,975,000. What he doesn't use is the most comparable and closest office space to the Borthwick Village parcel, which is Liberty Mutual. This office site is 11 acres and would easily fit within the developer's parcel with roughly the same amount of open space as the CCRC proposed. Liberty Mutual is currently assessed at $37,245,200. Assessment of the CCRC. Russ Tebow, again, of Applied Economics Research, in the same fiscal impact study, shows an estimated assessment of $131,625,000 for Borthwick Village. Mr. Tebow bases his valuation... Mr. Tebow bases his valuation on the, on the developer's estimated average market value per unit, times the number of units, and then applies an equalization rate of 90%. All fiscal and tax revenue projections and impacts made since June of 2007 have been based on this study. Mr. Tebow stated in the Planning Board minutes of that same day that he used the assessed valuation based on Riverwoods. The developer has also cited Riverwoods in Exeter as a very good comparison many times. Riverwoods in Exeter is the closest comparable CCRC to Borthwick Village. It has 367 independent living units, plus over 100 assisted living and nursing home beds set on over 200 acres. It is recently cited in the same Money Magazine article that's attached as one of the top CCRCs in the country. Not only is it comparable to the Borthwick Village in size, in unit size, but also in similar entrance costs and monthly service fees. Yet according to the town of Exeter 2009 assessment, the five parcels that make up Riverwoods have a total assessment of $39,659,647,000. Why the difference? The assessed valuation of Borthwick Village in the fiscal impact study is incredibly flawed. It is based upon a privately-owned residential condos and not a CCRC, an age-restricted retirement and medical facility. Tax revenue. There have been many statements regarding tax revenue from Borthwick Village. All the tax revenue information is based upon the same fiscal impact study done by Ross Tebow, Russ Tebow of Applied Economics Research, commissioned by the developer and presented at the June 21st, 2007 Planning Board Meeting. Some examples of, from the Planning Board minutes, these are all quotations. "This project would produce approximately $1 million more in taxes than office uses. Net tax generation is eight times higher than for an office research development. They project $1.7 million net tax revenue to the city. Gross tax revenue for office would be $360,000. Gross tax revenues for Borthwick Village approach $2 million." In the 4/30/2009 Planning Board Work Session, a different plan was proposed and presented, that of the CCRC. In that presentation, the tax revenue was now estimated at $1,651,000, according to the developer's handout. Fiscal impact. According to the Applied Economics Research Fiscal Impact Study of June 21st, 2007, the estimated costs for this development, estimated municipal costs, excuse me, for this development are estimated at $655,700 versus $212,500 for office space. This means the CCRC must have tax revenues higher than office space by $443,200 to show a positive fiscal impact for Portsmouth, the difference in municipal costs. Currently, using the developer's study and presentations, the net positive fiscal impact for Portsmouth of the CCRC is just over $800,000 versus office space. If the closest, most comparable office space, Liberty Mutual, is used in the assessed valuations, the net positive fiscal impacts drop to less than $650,000 versus office space. If the closest, most comparable CCRC, Riverwoods, is used in the assessed valuations, there is no longer a net positive fiscal impact, but a negative fiscal impact versus office space. The negative fiscal impact to Portsmouth for the CCRC versus office space only widens when both Liberty Mutual and Riverwoods are used, and even more so when you apply the 2009, 2010 city tax rate of $17.09. In other words, it's a loser, currently. These are seven great reasons for doing a comprehensive study. In conclusion, if you want more detail, you can see my attached spreadsheet. In conclusion, I have attached the Money Magazine article on CCRCs. I have attached the copies of the December 2008 petition opposing the CCRC and zoning change with 66 names on it. I've attached copies of a new ongoing petition, currently with 105 signatures, that reads, "We, the undersigned, are against Section 10-SPOT-730 Continuing Care Retirement Community" of the revised zoning ordinance, and ask the City Council to delete this section of the revised zoning ordinance. I beseech the City Council to delete the CCR zoning changes from the revised zoning ordinance and not consider it until the city of Portsmouth complies with its own master plan regarding this parcel and carries out the comprehensive study. Thank you for your consideration and your patience.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Anyone else rising in the first round? First-rounders now, people who haven't spoken. I'm looking around. Okay. We're going to go to the second round, and second-rounders, please come forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor Farini and members of the City Council. As you know, my name is Martha Fuller-Clark. I live at 152 Middle Street. I've lived there since 1973. I'm here tonight just to revisit some of the comments that I made last week, to say that it's my understanding with regard to historic districting. First, let me preface that by saying, I unfortunately wasn't able to hear the Assistant City Manager's remarks earlier this evening, so I want to put this in the context of not having heard those remarks, and to also recognize the work of the City Council being willing to take into consideration all of the points that had been brought up at the public hearing last week and this week. With regard to the historic district and the 44-plus-or-minus properties that have been eliminated, it seems to me I haven't heard from any of those property owners in the past that objected to being in the historic district and in order to make sure that you have some consistency with the 18th-century residential properties that are within the historic district now, that you simply add those properties back in to off the Middle Street area. I'd also like to say that I agree that I think it would be important in looking at the zoning that's before you, that you do consider Islington Street really as an extension of the downtown in terms of how you want to handle that zoning going forward. I think it's absolutely essential that you should take into consideration a lower height level for that area, in the type of uses that can occur in that area. And we do have a precedent for having a lower height restriction for the properties that are on the waterfront as well. So as we move out of the core of the downtown, it makes sense to lower the height restriction in that area. In addition to that, I think that you've heard some excellent comments tonight, particularly from Mr. Davis, who I thought shared a tremendous amount of expert advice on how you should go ahead and handle the parking issues within the downtown area. It's absolutely essential that we continue to keep the vital mix that we have now and by the parking requirements that are currently required in the zoning plan going forward. I think it puts that at severe risk. And finally, with regard to the Allen Park area, I would suggest to you that you do return to the office zoning, office what, zoning, office what?
Office research.
Office research, sorry.
I think.
But that you also consider adding to that residential. I think one of the best things that could happen would be to see the property from Allen Park down to West Road actually have one or two rows of residential housing, which would actually enhance the value of the properties on the other side of the street, rather than putting the value of those properties at risk, provide an opportunity for some less-expensive residential housing that could potentially meet some of our workforce needs, and recognizing that that road may be expanded, that it would be important to look at how you might be able to landscape that particular area so you have this kind of residential node as you move outside of the city down Lafayette Road, rather than putting that residential area at further risk. So thank you very much for your consideration. Good luck, and I know that you will do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, in round two.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Martin Cameron, 469 Ocean Road. I want to address the Wetland Zoning Act that's up on the agenda. I know that the drafters of the reduction from 50,000 square feet down to 10,000 square feet had a good... I'm sure that, you know, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board and everybody involved had some goal that they thought that would be achieved, but I believe that, as also was pointed out by Peter Loughlin, that there are some unintended consequences to this that would affect probably hundreds, thousands of households here in the city. And by that, I mean that would go into everything on Banfield Road, Allen Park, Maple Haven, probably all the way, all the way down to F.W. Hartford Drive, which adjoins the marshes right down there by the creek, then extending up onto probably Woodbury Avenue and all other, other areas of the city. It certainly would affect all these people, and I'm not sure, but what I have looked at, it comes across to me that, and when you reach that 100-foot buffer zone and so forth, that property that you live on, you could not plant roses, grass, you couldn't fertilize it, you couldn't kill the Japanese beetles, and all you could have is marsh grass and poison ivy, sitting down at the end of your front yard or backyard or whatever it may encounter. But that's really, if I'm wrong, I don't know, but I think I've established my credentials as probably one of the top conservationists in, in the city. And I do that by, I take credit myself and Professor Donald Green, Professor Emeritus from UNH. When we went into the Great Bog, when there was a development going on in there in 1999, 2000, and 2001, and we saw the notice in there by the Corps of Engineers that said this was going to happen, and this development, and it was going to be on an island right in the bog. We went and checked on it, knocked on doors and found that all of your butters that live right on the bog didn't know anything about it, and this aroused a lot of, well, just surprise. So we contacted the Corps of Engineers and we had, they did come up here for a meeting and finally a vote, and with a tremendous amount of help from Mayor Sorel. Went to, she went in, got the help from Governor Gregg, and the city bought the land with a federal grant. Everybody was happy. Property owners were paid off, and we owned the bog. Even after that, I've gone into many conservation areas and done a lot of work on different areas around the city on any kind of conservation work. As a matter of fact, it was a consequence of the bog that we established the present 100-foot buffer zone that Portsmouth presently has. So I, I step back and I can take credit for that, and I'm glad to be able to take credit for that. I know the people that work in, in the Conservation Department here in the city, and I know they're hard workers and devoted to what they're trying to achieve, but if the unintended consequences here would be, to me, what I see is a lot of disaster, and it could lead to devaluation of your property, and that would, and caused by a vote of the City Council. And so that leads to other consequences. Files, forms could be filed for the devaluation of the property. I know a lot of, a lot of wives, a lot of husbands and everybody would be pretty upset when they see the rose bushes being eaten alive by the beetles and grass out there that you can't do anything with, and so forth. This is what I see. I don't know if I'm wrong, but I think, way it sounded, Peter Loughlin saw the same thing, and I believe this is a continual meeting, because if it progresses into a second meeting held, I think the whole ordinance proposal becomes law. I think I read that in the, on the graph. So just keep it as a continuing proposal till you hopefully repeal it, delete it, or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council Staff, City Manager, Donald Coker, 80 Fleet Street, Malcolm McNeil is singly one of the best land use lawyers in this region, and I say that with great respect. However, I must disagree with certain statements that he's made this evening. Couple of things are very salient to this argument. Number one, every community by New Hampshire statute must create a master plan, and all land use regulations flow from that master plan. That's the law. That's not opinion, that's the law. Our master plan on page one says, "This document presents the core of Portsmouth's 2005 master plan, a set of goals, objectives, and strategies that together describe a direction for the city over the next 10 years." Attorney McNeil made reference earlier to limited opposition, particularly to the CCRC. That apparently were not enough people here to speak against it. I sat on a committee that chose the consultant that did our master plan, and during that interview process, the consultant said, "Well, this is how we're going to spend our money. A third of this is going to be study circles and another third is going to be something else." And I said, "Wait a minute, study circles? What are those?" And he explained what they were, and I, I'm a consultant, I've been a consultant for 27 years. I thought, "Well, you're a consultant, just analyze and make recommendations. That's what consultants do." When I realized the impact that the study circles had on the process, I stood corrected, and I said so publicly. I think the study circles produced this document. Hundreds of citizens in Portsmouth spoke their piece for this document. And I don't need to reiterate, but I will, the document that says, "Land Use 7.6, 'Carry Out a Comprehensive Planning Study of the Existing Office Research District, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, specifically this piece of property.'" That statement of strategy was not pulled out of the thin blue air. It was done for a reason. The process was slow. Why? Well, the process was slow because, in the words of Attorney McNeil, it morphed a number of times. At one point, the applicant came to the Planning Board and said, "We'll give you $10,000 for every unit you approve." And when we finished peeling the city attorney off the ceiling, he explained to us, and I would urge you in some conversations, to have him explain the term "contract zoning" to you. Those things happened, it morphed, it changed. A lot of things happened, not because of any slowness in the process, but because this was a work in process, always a work in process. It was stated that this has been studied to death. Well, it may well have been studied to death, but only from one side. It says in our master plan to conduct a study, and it's very specific... It says in our master plan to conduct a study, and it's very specific about what that study needs to say. The study, part of it was an alleged study by a person that says there was that nineteen year glut of office space. Again, I bring you back to the, what I said last week. Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet of office space has been approved in the last year in the city of Portsmouth. If that's a nineteen-year glut, and this is a down economy, so I question, seriously question the validity of that. What is there left to study? Well, an independent study to follow the dictates of the master plan. I would urge you to conduct that study to flesh out the details. The Planning Board spent two years talking about the minutia of this, types of units, number of units, land use, this, that. The devil is in the details. Mr., forgive me, Manny, I believe, I'm sorry, did his homework. That information is there. The Planning Board spent meeting after meeting after meeting on this minutia. And how on earth can you be expected to do your due diligence when you have maybe three hours of debate? You've been presented a lot of information, minus the debate, you have what are presented to be facts. Please, I implore you, you must, at worst, carve out the CCRC, put it aside, and do what needs to be done for the citizens of Portsmouth and what our master plan calls for. Our Assistant City Manager asked a wonderful question, "Why adopt now?" That's a really good question. Why adopt now? There is so much left undone. And by the way, you are under no obligation whatsoever to accept this. It has been proposed. In summary, I would say, the applicant and his representatives are in fact entitled to their own opinions, but not their own facts. And the facts are different from what has been presented to you. And I thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers in the second round. Step right up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Allenson. I live at two thousand seven Lafayette Road. I'll try to be very brief. I have a letter here from a neighbor down the road who is a new mother. She has a four-year-old baby. She'd like to be here tonight, but as you could probably understand, it's probably pretty difficult. I won't read the letter, I'll submit it. And it just basically says that, you know, she's a new mother, she's trying to bring up a family on Lafayette Road, which it's hard to believe that someone would want to bring up a family on Lafayette Road. But there are people out there that, you know, like Lafayette Road and want to bring up a family on Lafayette Road. And she's, when she purchased her house, she just bought it in January, and she was told that it's Office Research, and she'd just like it to stay that way, basically. And I just have a couple real, just to reiterate, that I think that keeping those two lots Office Research is a really good idea, but you have to remember that Elwin Park goes from Hoover to, I can't even think of it now, down to Market Basket. And if those properties, someone buys them, tears them down, I think all those properties deserve the same restrictions that the two properties that are vacant. I live personally right across from the unemployment office, and I have a great situation. I don't even see the unemployment office because there's so many trees there, and the great neighbors, they're never there on weekends, they're never there at night. The lights aren't bad, but I'd hate to see that torn down and something that's not desirable to a neighborhood be put in there. So, if you can reconsider and go from West Road to Pevely Hill Road, I think it'd be a great help. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You can submit that, get that to the city clerk for the record. There you go. Further speakers in the second round.
Good evening. I'm Sean Rafferty, and I live at eleven fifty-seven South Street, and I'm a Portsmouth native and homeowner. Like many regular citizens here tonight, I have no personal economic interest in the passage or rejection by the City Council of this proposed ordinance. The views that I express are simply those of a person who wishes to leave future generations and even better Portsmouth. This proposed zoning ordinance and its accompanying site plan review regulations have taken three years to prepare, and the efforts of the Planning Board, Planning Department, and many others in our city is greatly appreciated by the residents of Portsmouth. Let me also say that there are many things in this proposed ordinance with which I agree and others with which I disagree. I strongly feel, however, that this proposed zoning ordinance needs much more public discussion before any citywide zoning ordinance is enacted into law. Tonight's public hearing is only the second time that the ordinary taxpayers and city voters have been given the opportunity to express to Portsmouth's elected governing body in a public forum their views on this ordinance. However, at last week's public hearing and at tonight's, we have not been given the opportunity to ask questions of our elected city officials in a public forum, questions regarding the ordinance, and particularly questions as to how the ordinance might affect our families, our residences, and our neighborhoods. It continues to be clear from the statements made by previous speakers this evening that many members of the public, and even many attorneys who have represented clients here tonight, don't fully understand the complete provisions that are in this ordinance. They're still trying to, as they walk up here, some have said that, "I thought it was this until a few minutes ago, now I understand that the ordinance means something different." So, I firmly believe that the public needs more time, and you people need a lot more time, to fully understand and to try to get the best ordinance possible put forward. I also don't understand the argument that the City Council should first pass the ordinance, and then, after allowing a proper amount of time for reflection and understanding, they can change it. This may be the way things work in Washington, but I hope it's not the way that they work here. The issue that I would like to raise tonight is what effect will this ordinance have on Portsmouth's sustainability effort and the quality of life for all of us that live here? We must keep in mind that Portsmouth is a small city geographically. It consists of only about fifteen square miles, including wetlands, and a large amount of that, perhaps a fifth, is under the control not of the people of Portsmouth, but is controlled by the State of New Hampshire's Peace Development Authority, which allows no housing on its property. So, in effect, regarding resident growth in our city, Portsmouth has a land mass about four-fifths the size that it had in nineteen ninety-one, when the Air Force left. So, in effect, the City Council here is only dealing with four-fifths of the land mass to put businesses, housing, and to do whatever you feel appropriate in that area, and it's not the size that it was in nineteen ninety-one, when the airbase left. Even with our small geographical size, Portsmouth is already the third-densest populated city in New Hampshire, and has a large influx of tourists throughout the year, which only will increase with the steady addition of more and more hotel rooms and businesses in our city. We must do all we can to protect the quality of life of this and future generations of Portsmouth residents. Portsmouth's master plan calls for our city government to work for a, quote, "livable, walkable community that deserves," I'm sorry, "that preserves its history and lives in balance with its natural resources," unquote. This proposed ordinance itself lists among its objectives, quote, "reduce dependence on fossil fuel," unquote, and to, quote, "reduce dependence on activities that harm life-sustaining ecosystems," unquote. In November two thousand and seven, the city of Portsmouth, as part of its Eco-Municipality Resolution, pledged to reduce dependence on activities that harm life-sustaining ecosystems. Portsmouth also has signed the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, joined the International Cities for Climate Protection Campaign, and created a Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Sustainability. The City Council asked the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee to develop a five-year sustainability plan. On November twenty-first, in pursuit of this goal, the Blue Ribbon Committee hosted a community conversation with over a hundred and fifteen people in attendance. This group felt that among the most important elements to make, quote, "Portsmouth the most sustainable place to live and work for everyone," unquote, was to decrease the number of cars, increase public and mass transportation, create more bike and walking paths, and reduce Portsmouth's carbon footprint. We speak with pride of the growing interest in sustainability in Portsmouth, and yet we seem to ignore the continuous growth in the number of motor vehicles in Portsmouth and the subsequent growth of our city's carbon footprint, primarily as a result of the increase in cars and their emissions. Within the last two weeks, the Federal Environmental Protective Agency issued a ruling stating, "The current and projected concentrations of carbon dioxide threaten the public health and welfare of current and future generations." The Cities for Climate Protection Campaign issued a report in two thousand and seven, which was funded by the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. This report, which can be found on the City of Portsmouth's website, found that the total two thousand and six equivalent carbon dioxide emissions released in our city was approximately six hundred and seventy-eight thousand tons. Approximately fifty-six percent of that figure, or about three hundred and eighty thousand tons of these carbon dioxide emissions, was generated by motor vehicles' emissions in the city of Portsmouth. It is estimated also that cars also account for seventy-six percent of the carbon monoxide in the earth's air. The large number of motor vehicles that operate on our city streets may also lead to premature deaths and even, every year, from respiratory or in-heart disease. Children are even more susceptible to exhaust pollution than adults because their lungs are still developing, and they breathe at a faster rate than adults. Poor air quality also impairs the health of trees and other plants, while healthy trees and plants can improve air quality by removing gaseous air pollution. Our city can no longer treat the amount of new motor vehicles and paved surfaces that any new development brings to Portsmouth as less important than other city concerns. Many of us living in residential neighborhoods already find it difficult to drive out of our driveways or to walk to the other side of our streets at certain hours of the day because of the heavy traffic volume. We also see more and more cigarette butts and other garbage thrown from vehicles onto our lawn each day. We often must drive our cars to the side of our narrow streets and stop to allow a car to proceed in the opposite direction. This is occurring often as more and more cars are parked along our streets in our residential neighborhoods. Many of you may live on streets with much lower traffic volume than I have on my street, but I can guarantee you that unless the number of cars in Portsmouth decreases, it is only a matter of time before your quality of life will begin to suffer as mine has. We do not want more cars crowding our streets. We want the exact opposite. We want a decrease in the number of cars and trucks from outside Portsmouth that operate in our neighborhoods. We need to encourage more sustainable public transportation, more bicyclists, and more pedestrians. Yet I believe that this ordinance encourages more building, more parking spaces, more garages, and thus clearly it encourages more people with more cars to come to Portsmouth. We must do all we can to make certain that any change in our zoning ordinance enhances our quality of life and does not diminish it. It also is clear that any zoning change that diminishes the quality of life in one Portsmouth neighborhood also diminishes the quality of life in all of Portsmouth. Any changes to our city's zoning ordinance must have the effect of reducing traffic volume throughout Portsmouth and not adding to it. Yet it seems that sometimes some of our city officials interpret themes in our master plan differently than did a large number of participants in the Portsmouth Listen's dialogues that were a major part of forming the master plan. One such example is that when some misinterpret the public's desire to, quote, "make the rest of Portsmouth as special as downtown," unquote, some seem to think that this means a desire by the public for more development with density incentives for developers in order to further encourage more business, more cars, more visitors to the other parts of the city, to the neighborhoods. Does anyone honestly believe that Portsmouth residents want more cars traveling through their neighborhoods? More businesses, more people, and greater density will increase Portsmouth's tax base and profit some who may or may not live in our city. Growth in these areas also will increase traffic congestion and pollution from car emissions, reduce our open space, and add to the city's operating costs by increasing the budgets of our police, fire, public works, and other departments as our city's infrastructure expands to accommodate the growth. As we have seen on our municipal tax bills, rapid growth in Portsmouth does not assure us of a reduction in the city's property taxes. There can be no doubt that the city's zoning ordinance is one of the most significant, and indeed perhaps the most significant, ordinance in terms of Portsmouth's development. In two thousand and six, Rick Tinter, then a consultant for the city and currently Portsmouth's planning director, said regarding a proposed new zoning ordinance, quote, "The issue that's going to happen is people in established neighborhoods are going to see changes," unquote. We must ask ourselves if the proposed zoning ordinance will produce positive or negative changes in our neighborhoods. I believe that if this neighborhood, I'm sorry, I believe that if this ordinance encourages more motor vehicles on our streets, which I believe it does, the change will be negative. In considering a zoning ordinance, we must keep in the front of our minds that once a building is constructed, its presence will positively or negatively affect Portsmouth residents for generations. A zoning ordinance is not like an ordinance concerning the leashing of dogs on Pierce Island, which quickly can be changed to reflect the desire of the city's residents. The people of Portsmouth, along with any new buildings built, and the vehicular traffic that will accompany this construction, will be here long after the developers have taken their profits and departed. I would like our zoning ordinance to encourage us to become a small, sustainable city. I look forward to a city with fewer motor vehicles. Fewer motor vehicles would reduce our road congestion and cause less injury to our health and that of our children. Fewer motor vehicles also would encourage more public transportation and more bicyclists to use our streets, and it would encourage more people to walk around our city. Unfortunately, I see nothing in this ordinance that will reduce the number of cars in our community. In the case of Bothwick Village, it is apparent that the neighborhood does not want this project for which a new section was inserted into the proposed zoning ordinance at the request of the developer. Perhaps this is not, quote, "smart zoning," unquote, but in the public's perception it is. There also does not appear to be an overwhelmingly clear articulated city need for a project of this type and this size at this location. Other considerations that must be viewed regarding this large development proposal. If Bothwick Village is built, how many more cars will travel on Bothwick Avenue, and what effect will these cars have on emergency traffic leading to the hospital? We must also remember that unfortunately, Bothwick Avenue has already become a shortcut for many drivers traveling between the Route One bypass and the road to Greenland and onto Route ninety-five. If Bothwick Village is built, will the city's police and/or fire department require a second access from that development to Islington Street for public safety reasons? Even though the developer may not be asking for it, if the city requires it, it will be built, assuming that Bothwick Village goes forward. If a road does enter onto Islington Street from Bothwick Village, how many more cars associated with this over three hundred housing units will travel on Islington Street, an already busy street in a densely populated area, where the sun obscures the driver's vision when traveling out of town in the afternoon, and where at least one person was killed when hit by a car within the last few years? What effect will other proposed, already-approved construction projects have on the Bothwick Village project, such as the development of the former City Yard, Schultz Brew Yard, both parts of the former Frank Jonesbury, and even the development in the northern tier, or the planned or under-construction developments in Greenland, which is only a few miles from the section of Islington Street which we are from the section of Islington Street which we are discussing? If Islington Street and Bothwick Avenue become more congested and with traffic, what adjoining neighborhood streets will see an increase in traffic as drivers attempt to avoid the construction—I’m sorry—congestion? Clearly, this will further diminish the quality of life in the area. To me—it seems to me that the quality of life of Portsmouth residents would decline if this project were built, and that the special consideration given in the proposed zoning ordinance to this developer should be removed. In the case of the so-called Gateway Plan Development along Lafayette Road, we can all acknowledge that Lafayette Road is in effect the same roadway which runs from the southern border to the northern border of our city, and it is known in different stretches as Lafayette Road, the Route 1 bypass, and the Spalding Turnpike. We also can readily acknowledge that large sections of this roadway are jammed with motor vehicle traffic nearly every afternoon, spewing pollution while they idle in traffic, and that is already one of the busiest, most congested, and dangerous roadways in our city. We must consider other things also concerning the Plan Gateway Project on Lafayette Road. Our city government has already approved the Meadowbrook Motel Mixed-Use Project at the traffic circle, which includes a new 120-room hotel, a 30,000-square-foot retail building, a drive-thru food restaurant, and a convenience store. And also, the expansion of Crossroads House to a 100-bed facility is nearly completed. These are all on that same stretch of road. Unfortunately, I believe that even with no additional traffic, it is only a matter of time before someone crossing Lafayette Road and the Route 1 bypass to either go to or leave Crossroads House will be struck by a car and seriously hurt or killed. It’s terribly dangerous there already, and all the time people are crossing back and forth. One also can assume that the old Jerry Lewis movie theater next to the Bollarama complex will soon be redeveloped, and I personally don’t know what other development plans for this roadway are already contemplated. The growing traffic congestion along this roadway also will grow because of the activities of neighboring towns and the state of New Hampshire. Will this ordinance, which encourages more density along Lafayette Road and thus more traffic, cause further traffic congestion negatively affecting adjacent communities such as Maple Haven, Elwin Park, and the Woodlands as traffic grows and drivers seek neighborhood roads to avoid the growing congestion on Lafayette Road? As I have mentioned before, a number of other large projects are already under construction in Portsmouth. The first phase of the Portwark development, which includes a five-story Marriott Residence Inn Hotel with retail space, will be ready for occupancy next summer. Also soon to be built in the Northern Tier is a Westin Hotel and Conference Center, in addition to numerous other lots in that area which will soon be developed. I have no idea how many new hotel rooms already have been approved by our city government. We do not know the effect that any of these already approved construction projects will have on Portsmouth. Unfortunately, with any new construction, any massive new construction project, we don’t know its full effect until after the new businesses open and after the new hotels are full and all the new cars that are associated with them are flooding onto our streets and looking for parking spots. As Warren Buffett has quoted as saying—
Mr. Rafi, I hate to interrupt, but I’m going to see if we—we’re certainly happy to entertain your comments as long as you care to make them.
I have probably another two minutes, if you don’t mind.
Okay, we may need to take a break so that we can, you know, have a second recess, but you certainly—if you had another hour, that would be acceptable, so please proceed.
Do you want me to finish what I have then?
I think whatever you feel you need to put into the public hearing would be most welcome. I don’t want to in any way be seen as keeping you from putting in as much information as you care to.
Okay, thank you. We do not know what effect any of these already approved construction projects will have in Portsmouth, and we will not know until they are built and in operation. As Warren Buffett has quoted as saying, “Only when the tide goes out do you know who is not wearing a bathing suit.” By the time we learn of the negative effects of any large construction project, it could be too late. The quality of life of the Portsmouth—of the residents of Portsmouth must become a primary concern for all of city officials. Clearly, we need a balance, but it is my view that in recent years, in our city’s policies, we have favored business interests, tourists, and those who move to Portsmouth. Our city government must give much more consideration to the interests and concerns of those of us who already live here. Any changes in Portsmouth zoning ordinance should be based upon the clearly expressed view of the majority of Portsmouth citizens, and we must all work together to preserve the best of Portsmouth and at the same time work towards making Portsmouth an even better place. We cannot allow Portsmouth to become just another anywhere USA. We have the right and obligation to decide the type of neighborhood and the city that we will leave to our children and grandchildren. Portsmouth City Council has to decide whose quality of life should be their primary concern. Should it be those of us who live here or those who wish to move here? Should it be the locally owned businesses that are here or the big-box stores that wish to move here? Growth is going to continue for many years to come whether we like it or not. I realize that there are many competing interests and concerns, and there are no simple answers. The City Council must decide based upon a full understanding of this proposed ordinance and upon the clearly expressed views of the majority of Portsmouth citizens if this ordinance actually helps create the quality of life that Portsmouth people want and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we’ll have a brief recess for five minutes, and then we’ll continue with the public hearing this evening.
We'll come back from the recess and continue with the public hearing. Before we ask people to rise, just making sure that councilors make their way to their seats so they can hear your presentations. Does anyone care to speak in the second round? We're still in the second round, I'm gonna call three, so you get another bite at the apple. Anyone care to speak? Please come forward. Step right up.
Malcolm McNeil, representing the CCRC proposal. I struggle with whether to say something or not, but I feel in the context of the information you've been given, it's necessary for me to make some comment. You know, developers are accustomed to being spoken about in a category that's analogous to lawyers and used car salespeople. But I don't think planning boards are accustomed to being addressed that way. And some of the comments that have been made this evening are not an indictment of the developer. It's an indictment of a planning board that would advance this project to you. The planning board, by its own admission, on July 16th had three decisions relative to advancing the CCRC proposal. The first was to vote to recommend that the city council approve the draft zoning ordinance with or without further revision. In other words, just give it back to you outside of the regular process. They chose not to do that. Second one was to vote to recommend to the city council it not approve the draft zoning amendment. They clearly didn't opt for that. The third proposal was to incorporate the draft zoning amendment into the draft revised zoning ordinance and consider it part of the broader zoning revision package. The whole idea behind that was, was to enhance the public input into the process. Now as of tonight, there have been six public hearings with regard to the CCRC, in addition to numerous public hearings that preceded July of this year. The passage of the CCRC proposal does not approve a project. It approves enabling legislation under which a project may come forward. Your planning board would never advance a project that was spot zoning because they had the resources to get advice on that issue, which they did. They would never advance a proposal that they felt was inconsistent with the master plan, which was cited by Mr. Coker and others and Mr. Manley throughout the process. They would never have advanced a proposal that they felt was inconsistent with the materials contained in the master plan in 2005. What was supposed to be studied and what has been studied? The study, the master plan says, should address the environmental carrying capacity of the site. That has been done and was part of the process. It should include upstream flooding, wildlife habitat, and municipal water supplies. All of that was done during the process. Potential reactivation of passenger rail service. It was placed in the legislation to consider that on this project. The potential for expansion of office campus development from Borthwick Avenue. The EDC did a separate study that we didn't do to determine that potential. And traffic circulation and access. A study was done, but the city has its own traffic consultants and it has its own planning department. So, there was, there was a suggestion by Mr. Manley that there was misinformation. Well, I'm presuming that implies it could only come from us. It also suggests that the planning board is unable to determine the truth of materials placed before them. Because if they felt there was misinformation that was coming from us, this project never would be before you. In terms of Mr. Manley's handout, which I, I looked at very briefly because I know you don't have extras and I haven't seen it before. Councilor Dwyer participated mostly in this process and Councilor Hetmanek to some extent. They've heard all of Mr. Manley's comments during this process. They've heard about the issues of who was going to live here, what the demand was, what other properties were like, how this was spot zoning, how it was the Kane Relief Act of 2009. All of this has been heard before, but yet, the planning board proceeded to come forward with this proposal. If you think this is spot zoning, ask Bob Sullivan. Ask Rick Tainer. If you think the process has been violated, ask Bob Sullivan. Ask Rick Tainer. In terms of the issues with regard to Riverwoods and taxation, Riverwoods is a nonprofit. Riverwoods has its own relationship with the town of Exeter with regard to taxation, by agreement. Our project is totally for profit. There are no tax exempt characteristics to it. Contrary to what Mr. Manley said, our project is not condominiums. That was explained to the planning board throughout the process. It's the same type of process as Riverwoods, where there's an ownership interest, there's not a condominium owner interest. In terms of the issues that you have to decide, in my view are these. After all of these years of looking specifically at this site, what new information can and should come in to help you make a decision? What hasn't the planning board considered? And do you trust the planning board? In terms of what was proposed by Ms. Hayden in explaining to you what has transpired, these have all been responsive concerns to people who have spoken. So when it gets to the bottom line, in my view, recognizing my bias and the possible bias of others, this ends up in your lap. And the question becomes, should office research be the continuing zoning there? Because in the five years, in five or five and a half years that we've been before the city, no one at any time on the planning board has recommended any other zoning for this site, other than what's before you tonight. The CCRC was proposed and office zoning were the only considerations and they are retained by this proposal. Do you wish to believe the independent consultant who said there's no demand? Do you want to land bank this property for the next 15 years and leave it office research? Is there a desire to receive the tax fiscal improvement that will come? In the words of the speaker the other night, "Year after year after year after year," the way that he said it, in terms of this project? Do you wish to try a project that has been thoroughly vetted for at least two and a half years by the planning board? Or start all over again? Because there's nothing else that's been proposed by the planning board or anyone else, even the opponents of this project, as to what to do here, other than to do nothing. In the words of Ms. Hayden, on the date that this was advanced, "This is valuable property in which something is going to be done at some time. We believe that advancing this kind of a unique proposal that has been genuinely advanced is something in the best interests of the city." The last thing I'd like to say is on the topic of misinformation. You know, the people who stand in front of you only have to lie once before their credibility is gone. Because everything I say to you tonight is either on television or in the newspaper tomorrow. And that goes for the people who have their licenses, that, that, that do physical impact analysis, that do soil studies, that do traffic analysis, all of which have stood up here before the planning board and given their evidence. There hasn't been no substantive contradictory evidence to anything that has been advanced by the experts. And there has been nothing said by me that is inconsistent with the facts. So in terms of this process, we believe the planning board has done the right thing in giving you the opportunity to consider something that we think is in the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers in the second round. I think I'm still in the second round. Second round. So that means if you've spoken, you're gonna get one more shot. Mr. Manley, I don't remember if you spoke in the second round or the first round, so I'll take it, first round. Step right up.
Good evening. Paul Mantle, 1490 Islington Street. Mantle, like apple. Only my wife gets to call me Manley. If, for no other reason to do the comprehensive study to follow the master plan, is because there's been a lot of misinformation in deference to Attorney McNeil, okay? I've given you several points. That presentation was 25 pages. I listed every time where something was in the study and was misspoken at a planning board meetings. I went on and on, realized couldn't do that, didn't want to have you take a recess just over my presentation. He misspoke again tonight. He said there was no office space recently built on Borthwick Avenue, when there was, just not less than in the past 18 months, which, according to the Portsmouth Herald, this summer is 100% fully occupied now. So obviously, there's a demand somewhere. As far as my remarks, there's been no indictment of the planning board. They're there to do their job. There's been an indictment of the process. As far as no other proposals for this property, well, nobody else owns it at this point in time. But a comprehensive study might vet out another use for this property. And I've made this suggestion many times. What would 37 acres mean to the recreation department? 37 acres, 37 acres of which, most of it's, you know, former farmland, and it's dry, and it's upland, and it's in the city. What can you do with three softball fields? At the price Mr. Kane paid for it, it's easily, you know, available to the city. I urge you to do the comprehensive study, to delete the CCRC and not consider it till you do a comprehensive study. The master plan directs you to. This section of the master plan doesn't say promote. It doesn't say review. It doesn't, it doesn't suggest. It gives you a directive. It says, "Carry it out before you do anything to this parcel." If, if anything, if you're that hell bent on creating a CCRC in the OR district, fine. Accept this parcel. You can still comply with the master plan. Because this parcel is in your master plan specifically to be carried out, in spite of Ms. Malcolm McNeil's comments. There have been plenty of studies done, okay? Many studies have been offered to the planning board, all commissioned by the developer. And as I said before, I haven't seen a proposal or a study or research analysis by a developer that hasn't promoted his project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the second round? If not, going to the third round and asking for people to speak one more time if they wish. You could be a first-time speaker, you could be a third-time speaker.
Can I make a motion? Can we, may I?
Yes.
That we recess tonight and take up the third, the third round tomorrow night, seeing as the late hour is upon us? And if, if there's a second to it...
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion.
I, I just think it's getting to be a, a late hour at this time. I know some speakers that were here earlier have, have left and maybe want to have an opportunity to come back tomorrow. I'd hate to try to shut this all down tonight and not be able to have enough public input. And again, with the late hour, normally we, we have the rule of, of 8:30, especially being on one subject. It is getting, it is getting to be the late hour.
Further discussion. Council Speer.
I'm gonna support the motion, but I also understand we have a lot of work to do tomorrow and I, I wonder if there's a, it's not unusual for, in a public hearing, to also have time limits on how long people can speak. We've had tonight, we've been very generous with our time. I'm wondering if the third round could have a cap, so we have the work session to do after that and possibly amend. I don't, but that's a process issue I'm asking the, the mayor or the staff.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll say this. Do you think during the course of this practice, if, during the course of this public hearing, we were to limit speech, that that would be met with applause, given concerns about process? Just a thought. But further discussion. Council Kennedy.
I'm going to be voting for the motion. I think that we've been asked time and time in this process to give people time to process and think and do this right. And I think we owe it to the community to have people process what was heard tonight during the second round and finish up tomorrow night. And it doesn't make a difference how long it takes, but to finish it up and do due process and be right to our citizens.
Further discussion. Council Claiborne.
Is there any way we can find out how many more speakers we have tonight? I mean, we almost at the end...
I will take the privilege of the chair and do that. There do not seem to be a lot of people in the room. How many wish to speak in the third round?
I went for 30 seconds.
We see one. Do we wish to continue discussion of this motion?
No.
I'm opposed to the motion. I think we should allow the third round to happen tonight and, I, at this point, the debate has gotten repetitive and, and a lot of personal attacks. And I think to continue the process at this point is only gonna be counterproductive.
Any further discussion on the motion? We ready to vote? Roll call, please. All in favor? Well, I'm sorry, you're gonna do a roll call.
I thought you wanted a roll call.
Never mind. I'm sorry.
A little tired? Assistant Mayor Blalock?
No.
Councilor Novlin Claiborne?
No.
Councilor Dwyer?
No.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Speer?
Yes.
Councilor Hetmanek?
No.
Mayor Farini?
No.
Motion fails. We continue with our third round.
Thank you. I'm still Donald Coker, still 80 Fleet Street. I, I just am stunned by a remark by Attorney McNeil, and my respect is still there. "Do you trust the planning board?" That was a question he asked you. "Do you trust the planning board?" I would take that and turn it a little bit differently. Do you trust a developer that stands to make millions and millions of dollars on a project if it's approved? I am, there's no greater card-carrying, free-market entrepreneur redneck than me, but I think that question is, is still, I'm stunned. Do you trust the planning board? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in the third round? Going once. Going twice.
Your honor, again, I'd like to make my motion to keep the public hearing open until tomorrow night, to allow anyone else to have the opportunity to speak.
I think if a motion has been made and fails, it is out of order, is it not?
Suspend the rules.
Okay, so we need a motion to suspend the rules. I'm sorry, we have, we, ah, ah, we have another speaker, but you're making your motion right now, so you, we would need a motion to suspend the rules to take that up again. Do you care to make a motion to suspend?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Time, discussion?
I just think we should be able to further debate this issue.
I'm gonna pass the gavel on this. This isn't affording... I, I presume that you mean by that, you hear the...
To get to the stage.
Okay, never mind. All right. Further, Council Dwyer.
I just have a, a question about the procedure intended, which is, it would be new speakers. I presume you're talking about new speakers...
It'd be to keep third round open for anyone who did not have an op, did not have an opportunity to speak in the third round tonight. And they can, people can still come in and speak.
Well, just, just a point from the chair. The third round is open to anybody.
Correct.
And so if you extended the public hearing at this point, it would be the third round that would be extended, which would be open to anybody.
The third, third and final round.
Yeah. So, the motion stands. Does everyone understand the motion? Council Novlin Claiborne?
I just have a question. Aren't we supposed to post public hearings, or is...
Continuation of the, of a public hearing.
Further discussion.
This vote is just to suspend the rules.
This is a vote to suspend the rules. Let's have a, let's do a roll call vote.
Two-thirds.
Requires the two-thirds vote.
Assistant Mayor Blalock?
No.
Councilor Novlin Claiborne?
No.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Speer?
Yes.
Councilor Hetmanek?
Yes.
Mayor Farini?
No.
Motion carries. The rules have been suspended. We now will entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we carry our third and final portion of the, the public hearing into tomorrow night.
We've heard the reasoning. Do we need further discussion?
Second.
We have a second. We needed that. Council Dwyer.
I wonder if you'd entertain an amendment to limit the overall amount of time, just so that we would be able to have, I mean, I think what we don't want to do is limit our time to discuss what happens next. So if there are remaining third round people that we...
I'll take that as a friendly. That's fine.
All right, so that's not an amendment. He makes a motion that it would be suspended, but with a limitation of time to, what did you say, a half hour? I'm sorry, did you give an amount of time?
We didn't.
I'd like to make a suggestion to her amendment. That you limit it per speaker, so we can avoid any filibustering.
Sure.
Maybe to three minutes, as a, as a public comment session would allow.
Okay, so let's get the parliamentary procedure down. We know we do our best work at 11 at night. So for the parliamentary procedure aspect of this, we have a motion to amend offered by the assistant mayor, which is to allow three minutes per speaker. Okay? That's the motion to amend. Does the motion to amend have a second?
Second.
It has a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. And I think we need to do a roll call, just because there's gonna be yays and nays, so for that reason. Have enough roll call pads left.
Assistant Mayor Blalock?
Yes.
Councilor Novlin Claiborne?
Yes.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Speer?
Yes.
Councilor Hetmanek?
Yes.
Mayor Farini?
Chair votes yes. So we, we voted that the public hearing will have three-minute limits for those who speak. There will be one last round, so people won't have two opportunities to speak. And we will suspend the public hearing, and I will recommend that we begin the public hearing. Well, we'll talk about when we begin the public hearing at the meeting tomorrow.
Do we have to vote on the motion that was amended?
I'm sorry. Did we vote on the motion that was amended?
Not yet.
Not yet. So let's vote on that. My apologies. Thank you, Assistant Mayor Blalock. So we need to have a roll call again. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. So we don't need to do a roll call. Everyone vote, did everyone vote yes to that? Thank you very much for humor. So we're done for this evening. We'll see you tomorrow at 6:30, and we'll start again.
Motion to adjourn? Or motion to...
Recession.
Motion to continue the recess and, and, and the meeting for now.
Should we just leave Lenora hanging? I think we just left Lenora hanging.